All right, it is 6:30 and welcome to our Golden City Council meeting for May 24, 2022. We'll start the meeting by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Chair, will you please call the roll? Counselor Fisher?
Present.
Counselor Cameron?
Present.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Mayor Weinberg?
Here.
Counselor Trout is absent. Counselor Reed?
Here.
Counselor Hazen?
Here.
Six present, you have a form there. Thank you. Next up is there a motion regarding the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I have a motion regarding the agenda. I'd like to move that item F being moved. That's hard.
We're not on consent yet. It's just the agenda.
Okay.
Move to approve the agenda as written?
A second.
I thought that changed the agenda and therefore it was relevant.
Move it off consent now?
Yes.
Okay, so...
I would like to...
Hold on, hold on. Can we withdraw?
Yeah, withdraw my motion?
All right, I would like to move to approve the agenda with the exception of item F on consent to be moved to June 7.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, the agenda is approved as presented and modified. Next up, we have public comments. This public comment period is for anything that we do not have a public hearing. We do have one public hearing item today, and that is regarding the zoning code, ordinance 2181. We did receive several public comments which happened, uploaded to the agenda. I do have several folks signed up for public comment, but it does say the subject is regarding zoning. So would you like to be part of the public hearing on zoning or would you...
I think they're on mobile home park, so...
So separate from the zoning we're talking about tonight? Okay, then let's get you during this public comment period. First up, we have Roberta Walton. If you want to come up to the podium, state your name and address or neighborhood, and you have three minutes to address your comments to council.
My name is Roberta Walton, and I live in the Golden Terrace community, and I am the interim president of the Golden Terrace Community Leadership Council, which represents 54 homes in three different parcels. Although the three parcels are currently owned by the same company, they are three distinct parcels. The Golden Terrace parcel is also known as Golden Terrace Village, which is where I live, and the other two parcels are Golden Terrace West and Golden Terrace South. Currently, our mobile home community is not properly zoned primarily as mobile home parks by the city of Golden. We are very disappointed that the RM Zone District for Mobile Home Parks was not included in Phase 1 of the zoning code rewrite. The RM Zone District is critical so that all three parcels of our mobile home community can be rezoned into the new RM Zone District. We ask that you prioritize the RM Zone District and the rezoning of all three parcels of our community. We are an important part of Golden. The Golden Terrace community makes up most of Golden's affordable housing and is about 7% of Golden's total housing units. Can you imagine if the land our homes sit on were sold? We own our homes but pay lot rent on the land underneath our homes to the owner of the park. If the park owner wants to sell or close any of our three parks, the homeowners couldn't afford to move their homes. They would be homeless. The majority of our homeowners are low income. Assuming 2.5 persons per home, that would mean 1,635 men, women, and children would be out on the streets. And this doesn't include the permanent residents in the RV in the South community. Please prioritize finalizing the RM Zone District and the rezoning of all three parcels of our Golden Terrace community. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Next, we have Mary Lou Ilers. Apologies if I pronounced that incorrectly.
It's I-lers with an E. Good evening. My name is Mary Lou Ilers. I live in the Golden Terrace South community. I have lived there since 1978. At that time, there were three owners of the three separate parks. So it's important that you know that there are three separate parcels. Golden Terrace South used to be the East Tin Cup Village. East Tin Cup was purchased by MHC in 1997 and today does business as the Golden Terrace South. So it's important that you remember that they are three separate parcels. It's also important for you to know that we all pay, we all own our own homes and pay around $1,000 a month rent plus utilities for the lot that that home sits on. Many families live in these parks are low income or fixed income like myself. This is basically the last of any affordable housing in the area. Golden Terrace South is currently zoned as commercial. I am disappointed and very concerned that the finalizing of the RM Zone District has been delayed. The RM Zone needs to be prioritized and finalized preferably by sometime next month so that the rezoning process for Golden Terrace Parks can be initiated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And the final person signed up is Tanya Lee Happ.
Good evening, everyone on the council. My name is Tanya Lee Happ. I live up in the Golden Terrace West community, so I'm at the very top. In this community, there is a lot of families, more than there is in South and in Village. In Village, it was actually started out as the senior living, so 55 and up. South became more RV and single family living, and then West became the multifamily living all up in there. About five years ago, somebody did try to come in and buy the West Village. They wanted to purchase, which yes, we know that once they purchased, we have a year to get out and whatever, but that would put a lot of families and a lot of the kids that actually go to Shelton Elementary out of their schools. They would also take them away from Bell Junior High and Golden High School, all three schools of which I attended and love and am alumni of. So with that being said, we've also had a lot of the elderly that have moved in, and like my other colleagues have also talked to you guys about, there is a lot of seniors that also live up there as well. So putting these people out of their homes would be devastating, to say the least, and a lot of them can't afford the senior house living that's up towards the northern part of Golden. So with that being said, the RM zoning is a really important issue to us. We're really upset that we got passed up. We really need this to be prioritized so that way all of us can get together and say hurrah, Golden cares. And with that also being said, I am on the council there, and I would love to tell our residents that we've got this taken care of for them so they're not feeling any anxiety towards anything that's going to be happening in the future. Thank you for guys' time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to council at this time? All right, then I will close the public comment period and ask if there's any council staff response to public comments.
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you first of all for coming out. I know it's hard to break away from your family life to do so, and it is a very important message that you've carried forward. From what I understand about the situation, there will need to be a public hearing on the rezoning because of the way the statutes are and the way the ownership resides, and it was our hope and intent. But we have online Rick Murby and Todd, and they've been working very hard on this rezoning, I'm sorry, the zoning code, and we just were not able to get it in. I would like to ask if staff could respond at all with target, and maybe Rick could unmute himself?
Yes, thank you, Counselor. You know, as I think many members of council are aware, we've been working with the ownership group for the Golden Terrace Mobile Park. We've been working with them for some time now to negotiate a zoning. Pardon me, I'm under the weather here. But the fact of the matter is, we went through the legal review of the draft that we had, and there were too many issues that we had to sort out before it could be ready to present for adoption. So we will, as soon as Phase 1 is adopted, we will get back on that task, work through the legal questions, and then re-present it to the ownership for a cooperative rezoning effort to follow. So we expect that to happen very soon. We will work on it before we get to Phase 2.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Murby, and thank you, Counselor Cameron. And just for maybe clarification, because we have talked about this before, it is a priority, but my understanding is there's two separate efforts that the city will need to undertake. One is the rezoning, which you just talked about, so from commercial to the mobile home park zoning. And the second, which is part of the zoning code rewrite future phase, would be if we need to change any of the code related to mobile home parks. Is that second piece something that's on the horizon, or are we not going to look at the mobile home park as part of the zoning rewrite?
Well, the way we've been approaching it is to first get the RM zoning district correct, and then once we get the RM zoning district in the shape that it needs to be, because it is a zone district, but it doesn't have anything, you don't have anything zoned on it.
Oh.
It's currently an unused zone district, so it's kind of a shell. And therefore, we need to flush it out more and then make it a workable zone district. And once we do, we can get the RM zoning into our code, and then we can rezone Golden Terrace to that RM zone.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I knew we had RM. I didn't realize it was unused, and that piece needed to be addressed, so that's helpful. Counselor Hazen?
So we have talked about this for maybe a year. It's been on our radar. I know that you've got one vote right now. I think you may have more. I can darn this thing, they only give me one vote, but I think that there is some strong feelings for the mobile home parks. And I believe the West Mobile Home Park is in my ward. So I think you should, if you're going to take anything back now, take back that there's a good feeling on the council, and that we want to get, the zoning, rezoning is a difficult issue. We're not trying to make lots of changes to, anyway, it's on the way, and I think you'll be hearing about it before the end of the year.
Anyone else on this topic or anything else we received via email, public comment? Can we move on? No? All right, thank you. We will move on in our agenda, which is item six, Consent Matters, and Counselor Cameron?
Madam Mayor, prior to reading or moving that we accept the Consent Matters as amended, I would like to read this statement. "Prior to my time on council, I attended a meeting with the representative, representatives of the applicant of the overall Coors Tech project and talked about affordable housing. I attended a meeting in Building 1 as a member of the community as well. I have no personal interest nor benefit from any aspect of this case. I feel capable of reviewing the public record and participating in decision-making and being an impartial decision-maker on the associated issues with this project." And with that, I move that we approve the consent items as amended.
A second.
We'll give it to Counselor Hazen. Any questions or discussion on the consent items? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the consent matters are approved, and there were quite a few of them. Next up, we have two proclamations this evening, and the first is for Memorial Day, and Counselor Hazen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a proclamation for Memorial Day. Whereas for more than two centuries, Americans have been called to defend the founding ideals of our democracy. On Memorial Day, a grateful nation remembers the proud patriots who made the ultimate sacrifice in defense of liberty's blessings. And whereas, from the opening battles of the American Revolution, through the turmoil of the Civil War to World War I, World War II, Korea, and Vietnam, to the Persian Gulf and today's operations on terror in Afghanistan, Iraq, and around the world, the members of our military have built a tradition of honorable and faithful service. As we observe Memorial Day, we remember the more than 1 million Americans who have died to preserve our freedom, the more than 140,000 citizens who were prisoners of war, and all those who were declared missing in action. And whereas today, all who wear the uniform of the United States are serving at a crucial hour in history, and each has answered a call to serve our nation on the front lines of freedom. On this Memorial Day, we honor all of our fallen soldiers, their commitment to our country, and their legacy of patriotism and sacrifice. By giving their lives in the cause of freedom, these heroes have protected and inspired all Americans. And whereas in respect of their devotion to America, the Congress, by joint resolution approved on May 11, 1950, as amended, 46 statute 1528, requested that the President issue a proclamation calling on the people of the United States to observe each Memorial Day as a day of prayer and for permanent peace, designated a period on that day when people of the United States might unify in prayer. The Congress by public law 106-579 has also designated the minute beginning at 3 o'clock PM local time on that day as a time for all Americans to observe the national moment of remembrance. Now, therefore, I, Paul Hazen, on behalf of Laura Weinberg, the mayor of Golden, do hereby proclaim May 30, 2022, as Memorial Day in the city of Golden, as a day of prayer for permanent peace, and I designate the hour beginning at 11:00 AM on that day as a time to unite in prayer. I also ask all Golden residents to observe the national moment of remembrance beginning at 3:00 PM local time on Memorial Day. Dated this day, 24th day, date of May 2022, Laura Weinberg. Thank you.
Next up is a proclamation we do every year, and particularly relevant today, and Counselor Cameron's going to read this one on gun violence awareness.
Madam Mayor, I almost decided not to come to City Council tonight. I was so upset about the news that I heard about the shooting in Texas. And I was upset for many reasons. It was 23 years ago that Columbine happened, and I remember when that happened, I was in Colorado, and the news was consumed with it. And today, the news was not consumed with it. It was normalized. It was a brief story with news to come. But I'm crushed that it has become so normal that we went on with our normal news cycle and mentioned a shooting of 14 children and a teacher in Texas. I'd like to take another 15 seconds of silence just to get myself gathered. Whereas every day, more than 110 Americans are killed by gun violence alongside more than 200 who are shot and wounded, and on average, there are more than 16,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun violence than people in other high-income countries. And whereas Colorado has 805 gun deaths every year with a rate of 14 deaths per 100,000 people, Colorado has the 21st, sorry, 21st highest rate of gun deaths in the United States. And whereas gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities. And whereas crime across the nation, including in Golden, I'm sorry, where cities, I apologize, where cities across the nation, including in Golden, are working to end this senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas support for the Second Amendment right of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as the COVID-19 pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence after more than a year of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide, and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence. And whereas in January 2013, Hidayah Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15, and on June 4, 2021, to recognize the 24th birthday of Hidayah born June 2, 1997, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hidayah, other victims of gun violence, and their loved ones. That's June 2, just to remind you. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hidayah's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, they chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 3, the first Friday in June in 2022, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now, therefore, do I, Laura Weinberg, as mayor of the city of Golden, do hereby proclaim June 3, 2022, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Golden, Colorado, and encourage all residents to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives dated in Golden, Colorado, this 24th day of May 2022.
Thank you very much, Counselor Cameron. All right, moving on in our agenda, and I'm glad you decided to still come to council this evening.
Thank you.
I know there's more news coming out, and it is a tragic, tragic event down in Texas today. We have this evening on first reading ordinance 2186, and that's approving a vesting agreement for Coors Tech, Ninth Street PUD official development plan. And I know Mr. Murby is under the weather. I appreciate him joining us online, and we have Ms. Simmons here in person with us. Thank you both for bringing this forward for our discussion.
Thank you. So in preparation for the second reading of ordinance 8186, planning staff is seeking some guidance from City Council regarding vesting for the Coors Tech official development plan. In particular, there's one matter that Planning Commission brought forward with regards to the length of vesting that would be requested, that is being requested by Coors Tech and was recommended by Planning Commission. So at the April 26 hearing, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the ODP and the alley vacation, but provided a more qualified recommendation to you, City Council, with regards to vesting that is being requested. The applicant is requesting a 20-year vesting period for the ODP, for several components of the ODP, which include the workforce housing provisions. Commission also recommended, along with staff, a 10-year vesting period for the components of this ODP. However, Planning Commission did recommend that City Council allow, consider allowing a 20-year vesting period if the applicant were open to doing more in the terms of workforce housing. More specifically, front-loading the workforce housing requirement units such as a cash contribution at the beginning of what's known as Phase 1 of the ODP, of the build-out of that particular phase. I think the idea at the time was that there is a more immediate need for workforce housing, and this would accelerate the provision of those units in the community potentially. And it may be worth, with that, allowing a 20-year vesting. Just to be clear, the Phase 1 is a minimum of nine units, an overall requirement of 25 units, a minimum requirement of 25 units. This Planning Commission also recommended that staff consult with the Affordable Housing Coordinator, and we did. And we provided two options to suggest to you this evening. The first would be that this provision could be accomplished by either a cash contribution directly to a housing nonprofit in the community, or by contributing the same funds to a yet established housing trust fund, which I know you all discussed recently. So with that, staff is not asking council for a decision tonight regarding vesting or the affordable housing components completely of the ODP, but here to gather feedback with the idea that with Planning Commission's suggestion, having some feedback from City Council would help us shape that proposal to come forward on June 7 to you.
Thank you for that presentation. It is a complex topic. It's not something we talk about often or ever. So appreciate the opportunity to ask the questions and provide the guidance this evening before it comes back to us for the final decision-making. Council, questions of Ms. Simmons, or if there are no questions, feel free with comments at this time. Counselor Fisher?
Thanks, Mayor. Lauren, would you mind helping to flesh out the understanding of the value of the affordable housing units and as currently envisioned by the applicant and also what Planning Commission is suggesting, is the value that would is the value that would be added on by going from a 10-year to a 20-year vesting?
So if I understand the question, perhaps maybe part one, what is typically the value of a unit, and then what would be potentially with the vesting? So, a value of a unit can vary, but in Golden, I know the number we've been talking about is 350,000 per unit, is what we think. Obviously, that's kind of a number. I know the Affordable Housing Coordinator, she told me that number, and obviously, that number is something that you all can think about. But as far as the timeline, I think what staff and Planning Commission were thinking about is that the housing policies, in particular workforce or affordable housing, is a changing policy area in the city, and we know that because you are all talking about it on a regular basis. And the 10-year vesting for that was really to think about, the timeline that we thought about for 10 years was really thinking about that this is a changing policy area, and that 10 years was something we could see into the future, and that 20 years was a long time. However, affordable housing is something the community needs now. I think that's something Planning Commission was saying in their deliberations, and that the upfront provision of those units to be forever affordable would benefit the community in the longer term.
Okay, and so this isn't necessarily more or less, it's more of a front-loading the affordable housing as opposed to spreading it out over a longer period of time?
Not necessarily. So, within the ODP, there is a phased approach to providing the affordable housing units. The applicant has agreed to a minimum of 25%. 25 units, or one per nine units provided on their site. So, they're providing 25 units regardless, and that is a phased approach, nine in Phase 1, eight in Phase 2, eight in Phase 3. And that the providing those units upfront would be of more value. So that's what I think Planning Commission was thinking on that matter.
Okay, so that may help explain. Can you confirm, so when you were using nine and 25, 1 in 9 is the ratio that they're proposing for workforce, and 25 is the expected total number, regardless of how many they build out, or based on whether their plans change in terms of the number of units?
So 25 units is committed regardless of whether they build residential on the site or not. In addition to the 25 units, well, it wouldn't be addition, 25 would count towards that, obviously. But if residential was built on the site, there would be one unit per nine market-rate units provided. So let's say that for round numbers sake, you know, there was 81 units, there would be, you know, nine affordable housing units associated with that in addition.
Okay. Once you got past the 1 in 9 ratio of the 25, okay, this is mathing. I like it. Okay, that's helpful. I did not understand how that worked. So what would the number of units that they would have to reach to, we would have to get to some fairly large number of residential units before we got above 25?
So 25 would be...
500?
Yeah, I think it's around...
Or 450, depending on how you do your math.
10%, so it'd be 250 units.
250.
Would be 25.
25, I was thinking...
I just want to clarify, my reading of it was it was an or of 1 of 9, the greater of 25, or 1 for every 9. And what I was hearing from you sounded like it was addition, not an or.
Right. It's 25 is the minimum regardless of how many units they would provide. And if they built 250 units onsite, the 25 units would be, would count for their affordable housing requirements.
Madam Mayor, the wording is, I've got it right in front of me, it's a little bit confusing, but it says the greater of 25 units, or 1 for every 9. So it could be more than 25, and 25 is the min.
Counsel Hayesman, Counsel Reed.
So, run through front-load one more time.
So currently, the way the ODP is written is that it would be within Phase 1. The front-load option would say that there would be a trigger within Phase 1 that would be early on, such as the first CO for the first building, as opposed to the end of Phase 1, which would be 250,000 square feet is the end of Phase 1. So, you know, we don't know exactly how the buildings are going to come through the project, but 250,000 square feet would likely be beyond the first building.
Counsel Reed?
Thank you. So a few things for you. First of all, the value you provided to Counsel Fisher of the approximately 350, would that be for cash and lieu? Is that what we're thinking?
Right. So if that was the agreed-upon number of per unit, that would be the cash and lieu amount per unit. And the way the ODP is written is that it currently is that it's 35% of that requirement could be paid as a cash payment. Obviously, the mechanism and who that cash payment would go towards is sort of the question before you this evening.
Okay. Next one, I want to reel this all back a little bit, because vesting does not come up for most of us ever. And just, can you explain to some of the people at home that haven't read the rather lengthy packets, what vesting is and what the pros and cons are of granting vesting to a developer?
I'm going to start, and I'm going to let Kathy jump in potentially. So we'll start with me. So vesting is a state statute, and basically what it does is it allows communities to, developers, to request a timeframe in which a project will not have any changes unless the developer requests changes. So the community could not actively rezone a property if there was a vesting agreement in place for that time period. The developer, the owner, still could come back and make a change or request a change, but essentially, that would, the community would not be able to move forward with a community zoning, rezoning request, you know, if we were to do it as a policy.
Okay.
The only thing I'll chime in is that it's also in your code, right? And there's a default of three years for the vesting, and that that period can be extended by legislative determination by you.
Right. So what I'm trying to do is lay this out in very simple terms for anybody watching. The benefit to developers, they get certainty in their process, and presumably then the benefit to the community is we have the developer, we have them locked in and presumably proceeding with a project that we like. Are there any other benefits that we wouldn't foresee that people might want to know about?
So I think with vesting is that commitment for the timeframe. Typically, the request is for what is the build-out of the project, or what the thought is of the build-out of the project. And so it sort of ensures that those policies that are agreed upon at that time are all agreed upon in the vesting. So that sort of, you know, I'm not sure if I could speak directly to a benefit to the community, but I certainly could say that it is, it does really make that project, you know, we know it's 20 years, we know that's the timeframe. It kind of gives everybody that expectation of when a project will really be done, and, you know, those policies that were in place to put the project together will be, you know, there to the end.
And to help out, it probably helps the developer in completing the project, because it helps with financing, and it helps with transferability of the project, right?
I've heard.
You've heard, okay. So I'm just, I'm trying to make a record, to make it clear. So I'll leave it at that. It looks like, are there other questions?
Yeah, well, then Counsel Cameron, and then back to Counsel Hayesman.
Okay. One of the things I read in a lot of the public comment was the desirability of having the affordable housing component onsite. And so for maybe my other counselors, just so you realize that the limit of nine or 35% upfront is also to ensure that the other units, I guess that would be 16 minimum, would be onsite, and that cash and lieu wouldn't be available. That's my reading of this. I just want to be clear that I do understand that right, that nine of the units, we could do cash and lieu, but beyond that, there would be an intent not to do cash and lieu?
That could be, yes, that would be the, and it wouldn't necessarily be onsite, it would also...
Or within the criteria of within a certain distance.
Right, it could be within the criteria that are laid out, which is location-specific to certain factors, such as access to grocery stores and transit and those other employment centers.
Right. Well, I for one, if it was onsite, would feel even more comfortable about extending vesting. And I guess to Counsel Reed's question, and maybe our legal counsel will weigh in here, what I would hope we lay out tonight is all the things we want to talk about on June 7 that could affect our desirability of approving either the 10 years, which is what staff recommended, or even the 20 years that the applicant has asked for. So when given an opportunity, Madam Mayor, I would like to potentially talk about things to consider, but I want to be careful about that.
On vesting? Because there is a public hearing on second reading, so this is mostly designed to obtain feedback from you all on the term, as it pertains to the housing, so that staff can move forward and bring a proposal in conjunction with the applicant that feels like it can have some, you know, without having an involved discussion on second reading on that very topic.
If I could just follow up and be clear, anything that is vested, whoops, sorry, there's a lot of provisions on the ODP around vesting. Granted, we're talking about the housing now, but are you saying we're not allowed to talk about other aspects of the vesting?
Our recommendation for tonight is just to get the feedback on the affordable housing, so that that discussion can, so it can guide and narrow the discussion that occurs on second reading of the actual ordinance, in conjunction with consideration of the other aspects of the application.
I think I'm clear on that.
I may or may not be. Counselor, wait, Counsel Hayesman, and then we'll go back to Counsel Fisher.
So I'm still on front-loading. So if you could do it one more time for me, and that is, so when the first site development plan, which might be less than 250,000 square feet, is approved, what happens with regard to workforce housing?
So the way the current ODP is written, it really talks about getting the cash for those, or cash or units by the end of Phase 1, I believe, or closer to the end of Phase 1. So the idea of front-loading would be something to consider this evening, whether or not getting those units sooner in Phase 1 would be something you would all think worthy of a vesting question.
So what you're saying is that when the first site development plan, it could be that they could do all of the workforce housing in Phase 3. Are you saying they will do some in Phase 1 or all in? I'm trying to understand what front-loading means.
So, as it's currently laid out, there are three phases of how the affordable housing is provided.
Yeah, 9, 8, 8, go ahead, yep.
So 35% is also nine units. I know that's safe, right? And so it would, the way that the current ODP is written would say that those units could come at some, you know, some point within Phase 1, but not, you know, before the start of Phase 2. So the idea would be that staff has, in sort of conversations with Janet, Ms. McCubbin, is that perhaps getting those units sooner perhaps would be something you would all be...
Sooner in Phase 1.
Sooner, within Phase 1, and then perhaps that would be something you would carry through to the other phases.
When you say sooner in Phase 1, that's, Phase 1 could take three years. So you're saying sooner, like within the first nine months, or the cash and lieu immediately? I'm just still stuck on what this means.
So there could be a number of potential things that you could consider as sort of milestones with a project. Some of the, some things we consider are like a certificate of occupancy, issuance of a building permit, approval of a site plan. So we would want to tie any sort of, if you were wanting to look at a sooner timeframe, we would want to tie it to a milestone where we have a regulatory authority.
Okay, well, I think we'll have to continue this discussion in the next...
I think we might have some additional...
Mr. Murby, I believe.
Mr. Murby.
I don't know if this is going to help or not, but I just thought I'd interject and just give an example for Counselor Hayesman. I think if you think about Phase 1, the very start of the project, and say the first three buildings are just office buildings, you know, and there's no requirement that's kicked in for affordable housing yet, because no multifamily has been developed, and they haven't hit the end of Phase 1, which would trigger the nine affordable housing units that are the base of Phase 1. So the idea that the Planning Commission is trying to convey is, you know, if we had a trigger at the very beginning of Phase 1, regardless of what they build, whether it's office or multifamily or something else, retail, you would be getting those workforce units in the form of cash contribution, for example, right at the beginning. And the beginning could be, up to your definition, the beginning could be, as Ms. Simmons stated before the first CO of the first building, for example, or some other early milestone in Phase 1 that would give us those units, or at least the cash value of those units upfront in that manner.
Does that help?
Yes, it does help, and if I'm the only one that's stuck here. But it helps for me to understand, and I favor us, the upfront idea about workforce housing. And I just want to add that workforce housing means housing for perhaps city employees, or schoolteachers, or Coors Tech employees. These are all people eligible for that, and I'd like to do that sooner than later. So that's my, if you wanted some feedback, that's my feedback.
You are next, yes, Counsel Fisher.
Thanks. Couple of questions. Is there any requirement, or as the applicant suggested, they'll be doing workforce housing onsite?
There, while the site is a place that affordable housing could occur, there is no commitment to build it onsite. It's just an option.
So no?
No.
Okay, all right. That seems probably important to me, but maybe not for others, I don't know. What is 120% of AMI currently?
I don't have that one ready. I think it's dependent on household size, obviously, but I think for, I want to say, and I think it's somewhere around 70,000 or 80,000 for 120% AMI, but I'm just remembering the last time I looked at that chart, which was probably a couple weeks ago.
Okay.
That's for one, for one person, and then that number increases as you have more individuals in the household.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'm going to try to see if I'm on track with that conversation that we had of what we're talking about right now. So Planning Commission, staff had a recommendation around vesting to go to 10 years instead of what the applicant had asked for at 20 years. They were already given three years. So they're given three, they ask for 20, staff recommended 10. Planning Commission looked at that 10 and said, we... Planning Commission looked at that 10 and said, we understand there's a lot of things in the vesting that are being asked for vesting, including environmental and parking and lots of things, but we would be willing to suggest to council that just if the affordable housing piece were looked at creatively, they would ask council to look to go from 10 to 20. So I think this is really an important conversation around housing. Do we like Planning Commission's suggestion, recognizing that all of the other aspects of vesting would be the same for 20 years? So the affordable housing piece is a suggestion to move up, but everything else would be approved for the next 20 years that's in there. And so, so I know we don't want to get into all of that pieces, but I do want to frame it that we're just talking about affordable housing, but is that the only thing that council thinks is important in our feedback on the 10 versus 20 years? That was Planning Commission's only suggestion, which was around housing.
The short answer is no. I am in support of the 10-year vesting timeframe. I'm not in support of the 20. I definitely like the idea of trying to accelerate the, at least the requirements for workforce housing, whether that ends up being cash and lieu or constricting something onsite. But given that all of the other elements that go into there, whether it's environmental or transportation demand management, whatever, I think, I think 10 seems like a more realistic timeframe for me, and I'm more comfortable with the 10.
Other, sort of, I mean, we can still go back to housing questions, but other thoughts, feedback. Counselor Cameron?
Yeah. One of the things in the allowed ways of providing housing, I'm on page 81 of our packet, item four on the required, C4 of the housing piece, says acquiring existing market rate dwelling units and subject the same to restrictive covenants. My concern about that is it will potentially displace existing renters and doesn't actually add to our stock of housing. It may add to the stock of affordable housing, but we have what's already in town called naturally occurring affordable housing, which is, you know, some of the cheaper apartments, frankly. And if those were bought up and then deed restricted, it doesn't actually add to the number. So I'm not necessarily in favor of that clause. And then to your question, yes, there are other things that I would be willing to talk about to potentially do 20 years, but without the ability to do so, without the ability to have that conversation about other things that they want to vest and maybe tweaks to those, I'm inclined to say 10 years as well. So I, that's the question, I guess back to you and the council, is if we could talk about some other things that they want to vest, then it could be a fruitful conversation.
Counselor Hesman?
So I support the Planning Commission recommendation.
Counselor Reed, do you have any?
Yeah, I, I am more in line with the 10 years. I think 20 years is extremely long for a vesting period. I know this is a big project with a lot of complicated elements, but a heck of a lack in change in 20 years in our city, and I just think 20 years is too long. My initial inclination coming in was to say seven years and maybe extend it to 12 if they do this. But I mean, if we're just talking about numbers at that point, if we want to hold tight at 10 years and say 10 years, and this is the affordable, or these are the, the vesting components we're willing to work on, I think that's a more fruitful discussion rather than quibble about the actual number of years.
I like how you had specific years in mind. I, I also think 20 years is a really long time. I think about where the City of Golden was 20 years ago, and while it might be a great plan and it's a very complex property and a complex development, so certainly appreciate that it's going to take a number of years to complete. Saying that policies that future councils in the community adopt around a number of these areas would not apply to this property for the next 20 years. Even things like adopting new energy codes or building code, you know, or, you know, not building codes, but, you know, new policies for 20 years really has me hesitating to commit this community for that long. So I'm in favor of, of the 10 years on vesting and recognizing that there's a lot of, there's a lot of work that's going to go into that property, and after 10 years, they are not going to be done, and we'll, we'll have to take a look at what policies have been adopted by the city at that time. Counselor Fisher?
Thanks. I, I would tend to agree with the, the shorter timeframes. Regardless of that, I would love to hear in a couple of weeks, the understanding of what that number gets the community as a benefit, whether it's seven, or 12, or 10, or 20. I'm not sensing the benefit. A 20-year construction project in the heart of downtown doesn't sound super awesome, I think, to anybody, but whatever the number is, I would love to hear what that benefit to us is. Like, why are we extending it at all? Like, I get why the applicant wants it. Like, I understand that. I'd shoot the moon and say 22, right? Why not? I didn't know you could. It seems like a long time. I think it's, you're ridiculous, but three years is the standard. Why are we not proposing three years? That's what I want to understand.
Mr. Murby?
Well, right, just, just briefly pertaining to Counselor Fisher's comments, I think the applicant would tell you that they're, they're offering a number of things in the ODP that they are, you know, going over and above the requirements of the current, current code, and that's what they'll, they'll argue on, on June 7th, is justification for the vest, for the vesting period. But we can have that conversation at more length on June 7th.
If I may just ask a question, procedurally, what happens to the plan that's adopted once vesting is over? Whatever that time period is, it's adopted, it's vested for a certain amount of time, what happens to that next building that they want to develop on that property after the vesting is, has expired?
So nothing unless the community decides they would like to rezone the property.
So it's just rezoning? It's not if we've adopted, say we've adopted a completely different policy on housing that's different than what is presented here? So if it's 10 years and year 11, they go to build a new building, would the new, at what point does the new city policies apply? Is it during vesting, after vesting, not at all?
So it kind of depends on what the policy is and how it would apply to what was written in the code versus what's in the community, what, what the community adopts. So it's hard to say exactly what might change because that's in the future, but oftentimes PUDs are seen as overlays. We don't, we don't talk about them like that, but they are kind of administered in that way. So whatever is not addressed in the ODP slash PUD would default to city code. So if, if it's something, now, this PUD is very prescriptive. There are likely not be many things that, that go forward past what's in there. However, there could be something with the way a wording of a future policy or code provision would, would set forth.
Okay. I guess I'm just not really sure how it works.
I have a question around an example that maybe would help. One of the things they've asked for vesting on is heights around the property, different heights, different setbacks and step backs and things. Many of them are beyond what our, for example, Main Street A or B allow, or probably will allow. But even though they're maybe vested for 20 years, my understanding of the way PUDs are is they would forever have those height allowances even after the vesting period, and that in particular would stay regardless of what Main Street A or Main Street B requirements are. Is that true about heights, for example?
Yes, that would be true about heights unless there was a rezoning of the property that would, would be city-initiated. We don't often city-initiate zonings here. It's very rare, frankly. So there would have to be a, a city-initiated rezoning to take, we have PUD, for example, we have PUDs that are 40 years old in the community that we've not rezoned.
Okay. So I think for other counselors' benefit, then, I can see now why the legal counsel and staff asked us to narrow our discussion to the housing piece, because the reality is, is that there's very few things on the ODP that will change as a result of vesting. That's one of them. Our agreement to either, either take cash and lieu and do something early or not, but heights, setbacks, open space, a lot of those things, it doesn't matter whether we say they're vested for 20 years, they're really vested until it gets rezoned.
Right. Like I said, unless there was some overarching city policy somehow that would precede something in the ODP, but that, like I said, it's, you know, this is a very, very prescriptive ODP, so I, I would not foresee many things, but there could be something, you know.
This is helpful. Very helpful discussion. Are there other questions? Have we, I don't know that we've really heard enough to come back after tonight of, I, I don't think I heard enough voices of support for Planning Commission's recommendation to us, but-
I'd like to get the money upfront, but just for, for a 10-year vesting instead of 20.
You just want it all.
I mean, just to be clear, I liked their idea.
Yeah.
I'm just not sure what the 10 years gets, I mean, the 20 years gets us more.
I'm still not entirely sure what we get or they get, 10 to 20 years, other than it doesn't get rezoned, which I've been up here for eight years and can't think of a whole lot of rezonings the cities initiated, so I guess I'm just not really clear on either end, the benefits other than the certainty that it won't be rezoned, but we don't do that very often.
It's rare, but there might be an occasion where there's any to rezon something.
Okay. Counselor Reed?
Kathy, I hate to put you on the spot, but I, I have to every meeting. Is there any way we can make a PUD expire after X number of years so that it reverts back to existing zone?
No.
Okay. So I thought-
Anything else on this matter before we make a motion? Questions? Questions?
Yes.
So I just wanted to express my support for Counselor Cameron's comment about not wanting other de facto affordable housing gobbled up as part of the Affordable Housing Plan for this project. I think it's important that we get, in my mind, cash and lieu for a separate segregated city fund, not to a nonprofit that we don't have control over. I think it's better administered, administered through the city to spend the fund within the city, because that's where our impact will be felt. But I, I don't want to see some of the, some of the, even within the permitted area, there are a couple of properties that could be identified that are, in fact, they may not be 120% AMI, but they're pretty close, and I, I don't want to see those disappear or be treated as part of our affordable housing for this particular project.
Now, I'm going to ask you to bring that up on June 7th, when we talk about all of the pieces in the, in the application, so that it's on the record under that and not under the vesting conversation. Council, is there, is there anyone ready with a motion?
Madam Mayor, I have just one other question.
Oh, yes.
Just to be clear, the first two items that were on the consent, we will also discuss in second reading on the 7th?
Everything.
Everything will be up for discussion.
If we approve this tonight on first reading, the entire packet will be on our agenda on June 7th for all of the pieces of the-
Okay. And if we have, if we don't want to have any surprises there and get down in the weeds, do we have the opportunity to communicate with staff about those other two, or because it's, I mean, not to create a meeting, I'm just saying, like, can I throw some things over the transom and say, have you think, thought about this? Or is that, has to happen in, on the 7th?
My preference would be to, I, I would like all decision-making, I advise all decision-makers to hear and discuss the same matters and consider the same materials in the context of the meeting.
I, I think our practice has been, if it's a question, I don't understand what I've received, or clarification on the packet, you know, that staff can help, or something that you think is missing that you would like staff to bring, or, you know, that you saw reference that wasn't in there, you know, those types of questions, but that it's all done in the meeting, which is going to be a long meeting.
Okay. Understand. But I can send questions, right? Or you want those questions to, I mean, I really want that meeting to go well, so I'm worried that if we don't bring it up now, then staff and the applicant won't have time to have thought about it. And so, I mean, but maybe that's the nature of making sausage.
Those are quasi-judicial applications, and so we need to abide by quasi-judicial constraints to ensure due process.
So just come to the meeting with your questions, and we'll go through them all together.
If I may, Planning Commission found it really helpful to organize their questions by topic areas of the ODP specifically, so.
Yeah, there's a lot in there.
Yes.
We both need to be organized, for sure. Anyone ready to make a motion now?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 2186 on first reading and set a second reading and public hearing for June 7th, 2022.
Second.
Thank you. First and the second, I think we have discussed. Anyone else, anything further? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will be back here on June 7th with you all for the bigger conversation.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is a ordinance on second reading and public hearing. So this is our, our, our actual decision-making and voting part for the Phase 1 of the zoning I know we have Mr. Murby online, we also have Todd, that I can't remember his last name. Hi, Todd, thanks for joining us.
Messenger.
Yeah, Messenger, thank you, thank you. Mr. Murby, do you want to get us started?
Yes, gladly, Mayor. Let me just run through a brief presentation and then we can get to the conversation itself. So I'm going to attempt to share here, hopefully, this whole, this whole work. Okay. It's like you can see this, correct? Some of this will be repeat, but I thought for benefit of the audience out there, we should get through it anyway. So just briefly going over the actions since Planning Commission and Council had their joint study session on July 2021, there was a draft zoning map that was presented at three open house meetings in the fall of 2021 to explain the, where the form zones would be mapped, and we took a lot of community input from, from those meetings. We also held two study sessions with Planning Commission to advise on design guidelines and standards that made their way into draft three of the code. And then draft three of the code and that revised zoning map from the fall outreach process were both posted January of 2022 for the public to review and have been there since. After, after that date, Planning Commission held a study session to advise on the draft zoning map. We came up with a number of their own recommendations that staff shared with council last at your, at your, at your first reading hearing, first reading on May 10th. And at first reading on that May 10th date, we had a fairly robust conversation at council that night and, and received some direction, which has been incorporated into, into the document, and I'll share that with you in just a moment. into, into the document. And I'll share that with you in just a moment. Commission then held a study session on May 11th with the one day in between. And, and we talked through some of the changes to the code, as well as had a demonstration from an architect on the testing of the code, which was, which I think Planning Commission found very helpful. And then Planning Commission recommended adoption on May 18th, just last week. And now we are here before you tonight. The final draft, as, as Councillor knows, is focused on Phase 1, which is the residential component of the zoning code rewrite. And with the thought that Phase 2 commercial zoning will follow a bit later this year. In order to get this Phase 1 ready for adoption, we had some extensive legal review performed by Todd Messenger and his team. And as you mentioned, Mr. Messenger's here this evening. They completed the legal review and took Draft 3 and really went in and made sure all the standards were clear. They cleaned up the language, cleared up redundancies, and made sure it was consistent throughout. So they did a lot of detailed work to, to get the code in good shape. And I think the result is we have both a legally enforceable zoning code as well as a, as a more user-friendly code. I'll just briefly walk through the five form zones that are part of this Phase 1 adoption hearing process. The first is peripheral, and this has to do with single-family zoning. So you see a number of different house types there on the right. And then the core form zone follows that. That's, that is in a lot of our core neighborhoods. That's where the name comes from. And it features the house form types, just like peripheral does, but it builds on that and adds duplexes as well as the, the more innovative form types that, that are in the code. And that's the compounds and the clusters that we've talked a lot about. So that's where you see it first is in core. And then when you get to transition, you see all the same things that you see in core and peripheral, but you add to that triplexes. I know we discussed that at some length at first reading. And then after transition, there is the edge form zone. And that allows all the same things I just talked about, but then adds the small apartment buildings, courtyard buildings that you see. You can see them in that lower right corner. So that is, that is our, you know, more intense multifamily form zone district. And lastly is outer edge. And outer edge, as I mentioned during first reading, is only applied to the mine's campus. So nothing off-campus has edge form zone applied to it currently, but that allows the bigger apartment building types that you see in the lower right of the outer edge form zone, in addition to all of the other form types I mentioned in the previous zone. So that's, that's a quick overview of the five form zones that are, that are impacted. And we can go on to code updates since we last met on May 10th. So following Councillor's direction on May 10th, there were a couple of changes to the form zone map, notably the North Columbine Street area north of Iowa was changed from core to edge because of the multifamily character found there. And then per, per Councillor's direction, the north side of 10th Street between Washington and Maple was changed from core to transition. And that was to be reflective of the complete street corridor along 10th that we envisioned for the area. So the triplexes are allowed in that area for this zone. And looking at chapter 1840, this is the, the segment of the code changes that rely, that refer to process. And Councillor requested that we change that, that call-up period from 30 days to 21 days in order to tighten that up a bit for applicants. So that was made, those changes were made. And then if you look at it, chapter 1829, there were, there were quite a number of small changes made, but I wanted to just highlight a couple of those. One being that we strengthened the historic preservation board process for the mostly preserved building status. We, we made it more, more definitive that HPB had to grant a certificate of appropriateness, even if the applicant comes forward with meeting the quantitative requirement for, for mostly preserved status. So that's an extra check on, and that's, that's for historic districts and locally designated properties. It doesn't mean HPB would, would have this review across town outside of the historic districts. And then lastly, for chapter 1829, this was, this relates to Councillor Reed's questions about Kiowa and how to perhaps build in some flexibility for, you know, situations where there is a shared common area. So we added additional landscape flexibility provisions, clarified the interior lot line adjustment provision. And then there's those provisions that address common maintenance, allowing for larger tracks or common tracks, or elimination of tracks entirely and using easements instead of such tracks. So it gives, it gives the, the developer applicant more flexibility in that regard. And then the process, and I'll just, we, we went over this previously, but the site plan process in the long term, after 180 days, will be that the site plan compliance is determined by the Director and then all materials are posted on Guiding Golden for a now 21-day review period. And then Councillor can, can call up any site plan that it finds, you know, to be, to be not adequate or to have questions, if it has questions about it. And any two members of Councillor can request this call-up during that 21-day window. And then once it gets called up to Planning Commission, they can either approve, deny, or approve with conditions after a public hearing, which they will conduct within 30 days of that call. Going to the, the near-term process, the, this is a, relates to the first 180 days following the ordinance's effective date. And that, that is, there's some similar themes here. Site, site plan is determined by Director to be compliant or not. All materials are posted to Guiding Golden for, for a 30-day review period. The decision of the Director is not deemed final until ratified by the Planning Commission. So in this instance, it goes to Guiding Golden and it goes on to an agenda, a consent agenda, the Planning Commission. And it has to be ratified by Planning Commission, either by consent or after Planning Commission pulls it off of the consent agenda and discusses it and then determines the appropriate outcome. They can, they can ratify it or they can, they can ratify it with conditions or they can actually reverse the Director's decision as well. So those ratification decisions, again, are not public hearings. They're, they're based on Planning Commission conversation. And just, this is a, this is a preview to the, to the, to the last slide, but Planning Commission, as part of this ratification process and consent agenda process, would like to have, to have any two members of Commission be able to pull the item off of consent rather than a, rather than a majority vote. And that's what I have here in the language for that. So Planning Commission held a public hearing on May 18th to provide a recommendation to Councillor. And they did recommend approval of ordinance 2181, with that one exception I just mentioned, to allow two Planning Commissioners to remove it from the consent agenda rather than a majority. And that is the result of their hearing. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you. We've talked about this a lot. Questions about anything that was just presented or any other changes from, from the last meeting, any additional clarification needed? Councillor Reed?
Thanks. One quick question about the call-up process under 18 dot 40 dot 045. Number four says, "A decision on a call-up shall require a majority of the members of the Planning Commission present when those present constitute a quorum." I assume that's part of maybe what the two-person are looking at for that, maybe that 180 days. "In the event a quorum is present," this is the part I'm confused about this sentence. "In the event a quorum is present, and a majority vote in favor of modifying or reversing, an appealed or called-up decision is not obtained, the Director's decision shall be deemed affirmed." Does that, I mean, are you all comfortable that that says what it's supposed to? Because I just don't quite understand what it's saying. What is the event?
I think the event is that the Planning Commission questioned the Director's decision. And then it's going on to say, if a majority do not agree, that they don't agree with the Director's decision, sorry, I meant to be clear, then it's affirmed, meaning they don't change it. Essentially, it takes a majority of them to overturn the Director. That's what it says.
And as much legalese as possible. Ouch.
In defense of Kathy, she could have made that much deeper.
Okay, maybe not as much. But I think what Councillor Cameron said is, is the intent of that language. And hopefully, we're all in agreement that that's, yeah. Councillor Cameron?
Two questions. One, basically, they just go back to bullets that Mr. Murby just had. One was that I think it makes clear that this is not a public process in which if somebody says, "I don't like the design," that they can, you know, request a couple of councillors call it up and, and say, you know, let's not let this happen because I don't like the design. Because it's not a public process. I just want to verify that that is the way I read it. And I think I am okay with leaving it as a majority of Councillor have to call it up. That's like two more people. I mean.
Of Commission?
Well, Mr. Murby said of Councillor, but did, but did they mean of Commission? Who gets to call it up? Councillors or Commissioners?
I'm sorry, the long, the long term?
In the 180-day period.
The near term.
The near, okay. Could you clarify?
Yeah, Mr. Murby.
Sure, sure. In the near term, it's meant to, meant to rely on the Planning Commission's consent agenda and allow Planning Commission to essentially, you know, call it up to themselves by removing it from consent and discussing it and rendering a decision based on that discussion. The, technically, the, and Mr. Messenger can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I interpret the ordinance to read that Councillor can still call it up during that 180-day period as well. It's, it's part of the ordinance. So Councillor, any two councillors could call it up, but during that 180 days, after, after the ordinance is adopted, Planning Commission could have the ability to do so themselves on the consent agenda. And what they're requesting is two members of Commission, similar to the way Councillor has two members of Councillor able to call it up.
I suppose that, I'm sorry, I can't see the.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Messenger. We can see him.
Okay. I would ask, you know, Madam Mayor for permission to speak here, but the, during the first 180 days, as, as Mr. Murby said, the, the consent agenda gets these applications automatically, right? And the, and the Planning Commission can take them off. Theoretically, the Councillor could call it up and force the Planning Commission to, to hear it, I guess is the point. But that would occur in sort of the same cycle as that next Planning Commission hearing anyway, most likely. I mean, there's, I guess there's some overlaps that could create a circumstance where it could be called up on the next. That would be relatively, I think, awkward. But I guess if, if the, if this, if the City Council felt like the Planning Commission would unlikely pull something off that needed to be pulled off, then, then I think it would have that power to, to do that. Now, if the Planning Commission pulls something down and denies it, the applicant has the right to appeal to City Council during that first 100 days as well. So that would be another way, potentially, that an applicant could be in front of the City Council, is if the Planning Commission took Mr. Murby's decision and, and reversed it and ended up denying the application. No doubt, the Councillor would see that, you know, at the next available appeal hearing.
I, I have a question on that near-term, just process. So you said that the, it would be posted for 30 days. Would it then, after the 30 days, go to the next Planning Commission meeting? So it have, or what's the sequencing, I guess, of it? Is it, you know, maybe it's only been posted for 15 days and, and, you know, it's on the Planning Commission consent? Or how does that work during that process?
Yeah, I envisioned it running simultaneously. I wouldn't want to delay, I wouldn't want to wait 30 days before then taking it to, to the Planning Commission. I think that would be a very lengthy amount of time. So I see them as overlapping.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that because sequential could be a very long period of time because Planning Commission may only meet the one time for the month.
While I just argued that maybe a majority of Planning Commissioners need to be used to call it up, I'm remembering my time on Planning Commission and when I was working stiff, and even tonight, it's really hard to be on top of everything. And if just two people dig in and decide to call something up, I might actually be okay with it. I'm not sure that you're going to get everybody all the time to be able to dig into the details. So I don't know that it's, I have a problem with it being two, as they requested, instead of a majority.
Other thoughts just on this piece of the Planning Commission recommendation on the call, or the consent? Yes?
Yeah, I guess I agree. I'm, I would be willing to consider some other number than the majority. I mean, the, the City Council is two. You know, we use a rule of three thumbs to have a policy proposal. It seems like it would be hard to have something on that consent agenda because you're not going to, you can't get into the debating of the merits to vote whether to remove it. So it seems reasonable to me to have that be a little, a lower number than the majority, whether that's two or three or whatever. But I agree.
I'm going to weigh in here because you said you can't get into the merits of it. But my understanding of, is that if a Commissioner wants to remove it from consent, that they would have to make an argument to the other Commissioners as to why, what error they found, and convince the other Commissioners, you know, say, "I saw on this page, it, you know, it's supposed to be a 10-foot setback, but it's really only eight on this map." And then they would vote to remove it off consent to address the error or the problem. So I think you do have to have, and it only takes one Commissioner to dig into the details to then present there why they want to remove it from consent. My concern is if it's, the bar's too low, it's, "I think we should remove it from consent because I think something's wrong with it." And now all of a sudden, you have a whole hearing on a case without saying what was wrong or why, because you got another Commissioner to go along with you and say, "Yeah, we should talk about this one." So I'm worried about the bar being a little bit too low and not sort of having to make your case of where the error is to get a couple other people to vote with you to say, "Yeah, I see that error. Let's talk, let's have a hearing." I don't know. But I don't.
I know, I totally agree with you too. But at the same time, and I get your point that you have to point to something to bring it up. But then, the, the point is to call it up and then deliberate whether it was, there was an error. So it can't be that you then have 30 minutes of deliberating just to have the vote to get a quorum, right? You've got to, you've got to divide out the, who's going to say yes to move it, to consider it further, from the whole merits of the deliberation of whether there was an error or not. So Kathy, you look like you want to jump in.
Well, no, I don't. I'm just, I mean, we're talking about the interim. We're talking about the first 180 days, right? And the idea is that this process is being supervised, it's not scrutinized as necessary, but it really, it should take, this policy decision, so let me write it back, as drafted, it does take some agreement on the rationale, right, to actually engage the resources and time of staff and the applicant and everybody to actually engage in the debate over the correctness of the decision of the Director. So having, having something less is, is a lot less formal. I mean, this is just saying you need a vote, right? You just need four people there to agree that we need to take it off and to make that case, as opposed to, if you lower the bar, there's less of a check on, on that whole deliberative process, right? Everyone still gets the check. It's just that it requires a little extra effort to actually have the ongoing debate and discussion or in-depth, not ongoing, on that issue. And then, then you have this situation where if there is no majority of vote to reverse or ratify, then it's deemed ratified. So the outcome, it provides some certainty for the owner as well. I mean, they know what's going to happen. So, I mean, it's a policy decision, really, but I think the Mayor's point is well taken, that there has to be some rationale. that there has to be some rationale as to why it's pulled off the agenda, and everyone needs to agree on that action in the planning commission.
And I'm going to call, Mr. Messenger, I know you've done this before where it's been on consent in other cities. Do you have anything to add to this part of the conversation?
Sure, Madam Mayor. The way we saw it was exactly the way you described in terms of the policy, in that the chair of the planning commission would, you know, follow the rules of order, and that deliberation and discussion about whether to pull something off the consent agenda would likely involve some persuasion, you know, between members and among members of the planning commission about exactly why. The way we saw it and explained it to the planning commission was that the form-based standards that are in this package are relatively discreet and easy to evaluate whether there's been a mistake or not. So with that in mind, it should be relatively easy to point out what the problem is. And then beyond that, relatively easy to convince one's colleagues on the planning commission, you know, of a math error, which it seems like a rather simple proposition. And it seems like most of the elements of this would amount to a math or a measurement error. There are certainly some areas of minor modification type of flexibility that, you know, one could call up as well, and that would require a little bit more of a deep dive. So while we understand the concerns of the planning commission, you know, to be perfectly frank, we just saw it the same way that the mayor described, that what we're trying to get at is a level of administrative certainty where people can have confidence in Mr. Murby's decisions on this, and a level of review of the planning commission so that they know that this project that they work on for so long actually does work and deliver the results that they want. One of the things that the planning commission talked about and then, I think, decided to do, because this would be a discretion, was to put on their agenda an item that says, "Okay, well, these are the ones that we saw, and while they did comply with the rules, if there was something we didn't like, then we want to discuss that on a separate agenda item so that it doesn't affect the applicant, but it does affect the policy moving forward." So the same night that they saw something that they didn't like but then didn't pull it off the consent agenda because it was compliant, they could say, "Wow, you know, we think that some flexibility or some change or something should be either, you know, introduced here or changed here in order to ensure that our policy is operational going forward." So I think by bifurcating those two decisions, and certainly, we don't want to legislate application by application, I think you get to a pretty deep policy review during that first 180 days. In any event, there's going to be a learning process that's going to be great in terms of informing phase two of this project, but that's kind of how it was set up. So whether the city council wants to follow the planning commission's recommendations or not, we think our role is just to reveal where that came from and why it was done that way. And then, you know, certainly, if fewer planning commissioners can take it off, as Ms. Guggenberger said, you're probably going to see more of these, you know, taken off the consent agenda. And, you know, for better or for worse, there's going to be a lot more time spent on those applications than was originally anticipated. That's our thought. I don't think there's a right or a wrong answer here. The answer is what fits Golden, and so we took a stab at it, and however the council wants to go is what will become law.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing that up. I really appreciate that, in the planning commission meeting, that they were going to add to their agenda that policy discussion and separate it from the cases themselves. I thought that was a really excellent suggestion, and I hope it works well for them going forward so we can adjust the policy as needed on a timely basis.
I just worry if the motion itself is where the deliberation of the error comes. I get what you're saying, Mr. Messenger, that you're not wanting to have a long, lengthy, drawn-out, you want a higher threshold to have that drawn-out conversation. But if you're having the dive into what somebody views as wrong and the persuasion right with the motion, my fear is you're going to get the delay on 100%, potentially, and not the one or two, you know what I mean? And in a way, it's a little funky because it's not working like we'd have a consent agenda where any one counselor can have something removed. You have a consent agenda, but it's not really operating the same way as a consent, you're pulling things off, but with a, it's functionally a little different. So, I don't know. I, in some respect, it seems like a little bit lower threshold, but you don't deliberate for a long time about what it is, that thing. But I don't know, I'll keep thinking about it, we can get to.
And it's very different than having, say, last meeting minutes on consent, right? I mean, it's a very different function of consent agenda than what planning commission has typically had, which is minutes or.
But when you move to remove something from the agenda, everybody votes on it, right? It's not one council, one council makes the motion, but the council as a body decides on that. That's what, that's all this is saying.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah?
I think, you know, Councilmember Brown's point is well taken, and, you know, the city officials understand the historical operations of the planning commission a whole lot better than I do. So again, you know, we sort of took that step in the abstract, but if what you find is that the planning commission will actually make this potentially problem worse by having those deliberations that, you know, to get to those votes, and then to have that hearing anyway, you know, we may end up actually making the problem worse by trying to make the problem better. I don't want that to be a side effect. We're, as you may have already realized about sort of my philosophy and my practice, we're very concerned about the unfortunate side effects of what seemed like good ideas gone wrong. For example, the blurred background and all the ghost trails on my video. So if the council believes that you'll get a better and more efficient result by lowering the threshold, you know, by all means, that should be the policy decision. But the idea, and the council can accept this idea or not, was to try to create efficiency in the process and try to prevent, you know, all-night meetings of the planning commission during that first 180 days. So whatever will work to accomplish that policy objective, there's no greater expertise than, you know, the planning commission, the city council, the city of Golden.
Counselor Cameron?
I hope this sounds like it's a simplification, but it may not be. What Counselor Messenger said there really resonated with me. I think the way this is going to happen is somebody's going to find something that they didn't like about the code, but they're going to use a specific case to call it up, and it's going to drag that case out. But I think that they're also going to be advised by our legal counsel that because the code was nuanced or vague, we have to allow the applicant to do what it is that they were going to do anyway, and that the director probably did make the right decision, and that the real crux of the matter is, how do we want the code to change? So I'm wondering if instead of this call-up process being described as it is around cases, it's actually around call-up around the code. And the consent agenda is simply used to say, "What part of the code are we calling up for discussion?" And that we don't second-guess the director. I actually didn't want this process in place at all. But I think we spent two years putting in solid code so that the director should have the latitude to do his job. And that our real concern is, did we get the code right? And so I think the call-up is about the code, not about cases. And if there's a way to change it so that, that's my take.
Thank you. And I did hear at the planning commission meeting that there was a concern about an error being found, or, you know, it was brought up that somebody said they had seen errors in the past, and they wanted that opportunity. So different from the policy.
And I would say that was true in commercial, but we haven't seen residential for years.
That's my understanding of why planning commission was asking for this process.
Yeah.
Was for this error, which is, so it's not automatically the planning director, you know, it's not final until the ratified. Counselor Fisher?
We spent two years building this great code, we think. The whole point of this process is to trust but verify that that's the case, and that all through the chain, that planning commission and the director and city council have the same understanding of what this code means and look like. So I'm comfortable with whether it's two or three, fine, but the whole point is, planning commission is the venue where we should be vetting these things and having these conversations. That's the whole point of this 180 days, and I'm comfortable with the council call-up ongoing as well, so.
And I think the function of adding that item on the agenda for the policy review is exactly what you were talking about, Counselor Cameron. So they look at, we had these four things on consent to ratify, and it's that opportunity to talk about what things they didn't like in the policy or code, and have that opportunity for discussion that same evening.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a great piece of it.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. You know, the other thing that this 180-day process does is it builds public trust. I mean, I think that the comment was, "We want to trust but verify," and that's exactly, you know, the process that we've implemented that's like this in other communities, that was another point, not just to put that check to make sure that the policy is working, but to let the public know the policy is working and we're watching it publicly, right? It's on the agenda. It's not just an approval letter being fired off from Rick's desk to an applicant with no one else seeing it, absent like a cora request, or, you know, posting it on the web but not seeing the people making that decision behind the scenes. So it does help in terms of that. And, you know, a six-month process, at the end of that process, you go administrative because you know it worked, or you're making legislative changes because you're talking about it every planning commission meeting. So while, as a guy who also represents developers from time to time, who likes to have administrative process, and who understands the inherent value and certainty in the timing of it, you know, as you're getting a new philosophy, you know, implemented in Golden, we actually think this is a really good idea from a policy standpoint, you know, just as strictly a policy standpoint.
All right. So council, what is currently written is what we had discussed last time, majority, which is four on planning commission. There's, planning commission suggested two, there's been three. I'm personally, two is entirely too easy to get what other person who's not really paying attention to say, "Sure, let's do it." So it's a little too low for me, but I'm, you know, majority doesn't have to. If somebody, we can certainly vote on that on an amendment when we get to that point in the process, if we're done with any questions or thoughts on the planning commission recommendation.
I have other issues.
Okay. So let's be done with that planning commission recommendation and move on to other questions before we, you know, public hearing and motion and all that good stuff. Go ahead.
So Todd and Rick, thanks for responding to my emails from earlier today. I want to flesh out the issues I brought up last time a little more concerning enforcement of some of the provisions of the code, because what we're planning is, what we're talking about largely tonight is how you get approval to build the project, and what I'm trying to look at is what happens next. Hopefully, everybody plays nice and does what they're supposed to do under the code, but in my experience, that's not always the case. So under section 1829-595 subsection 2, for example, the owner is obligated to replace diseased plant materials. And we have, under the code, common courtyards that are amorphous things. Who is the owner in that circumstance that would be charged with replacing diseased plants?
So councilman, the owner would be the fee simple owner of the underlying real estate. So if it is commonly owned, most likely, that would be an association, and so that association would be responsible. And certainly, there are, I think, well-earned reputations among some smaller associations that they are at times dysfunctional. Personally, I'm from South Florida, so the dysfunctional HOA is a culture down there. So that is definitely concern. However, you know, the city has its codes with respect to maintenance and its requirements, and if the association isn't delivering, you know, it can still, you know, the association is sort of a permanent thing, it can require a constitution of that entity and make it act, it's just it takes a while. I think Ms. Guggenberger can tell you that code enforcement processes are never satisfying unless she's got some magic that I haven't been able to use yet. And, you know, those are definitely risks that, you know, are inherent in the process. When you think about how these things go moving forward, some of that comes out of the land use portion of the code and goes into the property maintenance side. But in terms of the actual organization of the shared space that's contemplated by this form-based approach, one should consider how that organization sort of feeds into certain lifestyles, right? So we're trying to create housing diversity on the one hand, but we're also creating that housing diversity so that we can have a diverse population in terms of cultural aspects and age and all kinds of different perspectives that one may have. So my habitat is a no-maintenance community within a mile of a Whole Foods, that's just where I like to be. So if I look at a place with a common court where I can share the expense with my neighbors and get a contractor to do all the outside work, I'm going to pick that community. Somebody else might have the idea that they would happily take care of their own lawn and shovel a walk over their own property that is subject to an easement on behalf of neighbors, and they would be attracted to a community that didn't have the common feature, but instead, you know, allowed them to put their sweat equity in instead of their membership dues. But each of those caters to a different lifestyle and a different perspective and a different thought about how one should manage the property, you know, within which that they live. And so our suggestion is to let the developer figure that out. We've provided any number of different ways where that common maintenance can be arranged, from condominium to common interest community to, you know, just private easement agreements that provide for mutual access, which the access part is particularly important. So that's kind of how that lays out, and, you know, we have provided all those tools. They're not necessarily obvious. What they are is flexibility for Mr. Murby to help the applicant, you know, reorganize lot lines or whatever in order to make something go. But certainly, if an applicant says, "Well, can we do this?", he could point to that section and say, "Most certainly, you can." So we're just trying to say, and when we were at planning commission for the workshop, they showed, there was a gentleman who showed a lot of different models of how these architectural styles could have pulled, and they were incredibly diverse. And what we're actually providing here is, from a legal perspective, a diverse set of potential maintenance options. There's always going to be in every city, you know, the landowner that doesn't take care of their property. There's no city that doesn't have that. I was actually discussing this issue earlier today with a Chirrells Village resident, and even there, there are once in a while property owners that don't keep their property up. So that's something that we're going to have to worry about. I'm not sure it's an exacerbated concern here compared to what it would be in just a regular, single-family, fee simple neighborhood though.
So a couple of things to unpack there. One is that we're leaving it then to the discretion of our staff to decide what is appropriate for each individual circumstance, which is a policy decision we'll have to make to see whether we're comfortable with that. But in terms of the developer deciding, I have to take issue with that because the developers cut and run. They will not be here. They simply don't care. And I had plenty of clients over the years that wanted me to do party wall agreements, and they couldn't care less what I put in there because they knew they weren't going to be the owner. They're just, it's, it won't be my problem, as long as I can sell the property. So the developers are going to go the cheapest possible route, and my question is, is that what we think is appropriate from a public policy standpoint? Or do we want to mandate associations or easements so that everybody knows these are the rules in Golden? You have to have an association. We're not setting your dues for you, so if you want to do sweat equity in lieu of payment of dues, that's fine. But we need things to be done. And so I guess I'd like your thoughts on, in those circumstances that you described where we have come, you've dealt with this before, have they worked long-term as opposed to just short-term for the developers?
Well, I think that the cheapest option is going to be to avoid Kilo. So if your inclination is to, and particularly for attached products, right? That's where the threats of potential construction defects and whatever, as I understand it, can start to come in. I'm not a construction litigator, but that's what I hear. So in terms of the presentation of it, most likely, developers are going to want to not have to deal with common open space, and they're going to go with the easement product. We've. We've allowed for that, using the ability to reorganize lot lines, provided the physicality of the development, you know, matches. And that's actually consistent with KYLA, which says you can't prevent condominium ownership, for example, of a property that looks exactly the same way as a fee simple property. So we allow that sort of flexibility in there, and I think, you know, the idea that the developer's ongoing risk is somewhat mitigated by not having an association is one that's, you know, has a lot of merit at this point. But other than that, if the developer thinks that an HOA community is going to be more marketable, then, you know, the developer, over time, and that could happen, I guess, you know, would have that choice as well. We didn't want to limit that choice, and we didn't want the city to be making that choice. We wanted the market to make that choice. What do people want when they want to live there? And by offering a variety of different options to a variety of different, you know, developers that would come in, then you offer different perspectives to the market, and different people with their different needs will come in. So if sweat equity is required, then somebody who, you know, isn't very strong and who gets around in a wheelchair may not be terribly interested in living there. But if sweat equity is not and money is, and that same person has some money to contribute, then they can live there very comfortably. What I think you don't want to end up with is a situation where you only have one kind of product, and then, you know, somebody comes in who doesn't really belong in that product, but they really want to live in Golden. That's when things start to fall apart in terms of maintenance, is they can't do the maintenance that's required, and they don't have a better option. So those are some thoughts. This is really a thought experiment at this point in terms of Golden's experience that's going to unfold. And unfortunately, it's not going to unfold fast enough for us to have that lesson in phase two, but this is a, an evolving project, and if you, as a city, ultimately get to a code that is rewritten and very stable, it will be easy to unpack what you need, you know, modify it, and then repack it without messing up other provisions of the code. So, you know, those will be lessons, I think, learned, no matter what the policy choice is at this point. And I think, you know, we should stand by and be prepared to make modifications and adjustments as appropriate.
Thank you.
Anyone, anyone else with some general?
Yeah, well, it's sort of on the same topic around clusters. Around the same topic around clusters. I believe that we approved some transition areas, and Mr. Murby will keep me straight, that, and transition is more of the R3 townhome kind of densities as opposed to core and edge. My concern, and I think it's shared by some of the public comments we saw a long time ago, is that there's no incentive to build transition, and there's no incentive to build a cluster or a core when you can build row homes. And when we picked off this whole project, it was partly to cut down on bulk and to have that smaller feel that exists in our older neighborhoods. So the idea that I've had is to incentivize clusters over row homes by, duh-duh-duh, touching on parking minimums. As an example, instead of requiring, I've got to bring up my notes here, two spots per thousand square feet, change it to one and a half spots per thousand square feet in clusters and compounds. My thought is that if we don't do that, we will never see a cluster of a compound, and we'll pretty much only see row homes and the bulk that people were trying to avoid. Or, we talk about it at some time in the future, but I'm concerned that we're not going to get the outcome that we desire here.
So I'm going to chime in here, but Mr. Murby, Mr. Messenger, please feel free to do the same. I believe parking is on the list of things to be addressed, correct?
Yes, in the longer term, we are looking at parking requirements, but, you know, probably not the time for phase two, per Councilor Cameron's request. I think, I think it's something that we could look into. I don't know offhand how to answer that this evening, however. I think, I think the encouragement of the cluster and compound form types is something we talked about in Planning Commission as well. And so we talked a lot about keeping an eye on, you know, when people choose not to do that form, those form types, you know, and staff keeping a record of those reasons and trying to determine what is the driving force, if there is one. If this theory is proven true and more people choose, say duplexes or triplexes in a transition neighborhood rather than the compound or cluster, we want to know why, and then be able to respond and change those incentives. Could very well be parking, I don't know. But it is something that we are concerned about as well. And part of it could just be that it's new, you know? Anytime you do something new in the world, it's questioned, and people are, you know, back away from it until someone else tries. So it could be, it could be that as well. Until we get a couple of these built, people might say, well, I don't know how that's going to work, so I'm just going to do the same duplexes that I normally do, just a little smaller. So.
Just a real quick follow-up. It could be years, essentially, before we deal with parking. So one question would be, could we slot in a possible variance process to allow this, or, yeah, essentially, variance process only allowed on clusters and compounds, but not on row homes or triplexes for reduced parking? So it would still go through a full hearing, people could figure out whether it fits in and that the compromise of it fitting in is worth it, worth the juice worth the squeeze. I'm worried that if we don't approach it now, it's out of sight, out of mind, and it will literally be years before we potentially put it in.
Councilmember?
Counselor Brown, did you have, or, Mr. Messenger, did you have a?
Yeah, if I can interject here, I think there's a couple of things at work here behind the scenes that I just want to put in front of the council. The first is that, you know, the, normally, a builder doesn't spend their own money. And so what's going to happen is builders are going to suggest projects that they can get financed, and those projects are going to be one where the banks know that there's a track record of success. So I think Mr. Murby is correct when he said, well, it's new, that's going to be an issue. Part of that is going to be the flow of capital into those projects. So if somebody knows they can sell a row home project, and there's a demonstrated track record of success in selling row home projects, that's going to be, you know, getting preferred financing. Now, there are some niche developers that build interesting small home, like cohousing projects and that kind of thing that would fit into the cluster model indeed probably fairly well. And so you might find a niche developer that's willing to do a project, or you might seek out a demonstration project and try to, you know, get somebody to build that. Even like a housing authority or something like that could theoretically put together a project like that. But, you know, you, I think the gut feeling is that row homes are going to get built, and there's an economic reason why those row homes are going to be built, and it has as much to do with the price per square foot that they're going to command as it does with the ability to obtain, you know, lender financing on those projects. So that's, that's sort of part one. Part two wants to do with parking. So if I've got a novel project that I'm going to have a difficulty getting financed anyway, I may not be willing to invest in a variance process in order to get reduced parking to make the numbers on that project work. Parking's going to be a small part, I think, of the overall cost of the project. It's a geographically concern on the lot, to be sure, because you're looking at approximately 200 square foot per parking space plus whatever the access aisle is that's required to get to it. So that's, you know, certainly, it's a land issue, but as an economic proposition, maybe it's eight or 10,000 additional dollars on the project. So I'm not sure that parking is the biggest problem that they're going to face. It may be one of the problems that they're going to face. In the long haul, success begets success, and so seeking out a creative developer, making them aware of the regulations, and maybe pointing out a good site that they could build that product in as a model for the rest of us, you know, that's, that's the recipe for success, I think, in terms of that type of product.
Counselor Brown?
Well, and maybe, Rick, you can help me. I thought also, we, there's provisions in there you can, you can order off the menu a little bit, right? You can ask for a, is it major adjustments? Is that what it's, I can't remember the terminology. But so, if I recall correctly, somebody could come in and say, I want to build these clusters, but the only way I can make it work is if I do 1.5 parking instead of two, and can that not be reviewed by Planning Commission? Or how does that work, Rick?
Yeah, that could, that could be reviewed today by Planning Commission through the major adjustment process. We have, minor adjustment is staff-level review, and then major adjustment is for bigger requests that all, that move away from the code language itself. So, you know, that is, that is definitely a possibility. It would, it would have to get through a bit of design in order to get there. I think that's, there would be some expense outlay to show Planning Commission the level of design that they're proposing that makes it worth such a major adjustment, but it is certainly something to try now.
We also didn't foreclose any of the other flexibility options in the code. We only added.
Counselor Reed?
So I want to respond directly to Counselor Cameron's thoughts. I agree bulk was one of the reasons that this process got started, that people didn't like the bulk. I think the way we can address it tonight is to make sure we have the maps correct, because the difference between core and transition appears largely to be the difference between duplexes and triplexes. And as long as we are comfortable that the map is going to reflect duplexes where we don't want too much bulk, because that's, that makes a big difference visually, two to three, and three sidewalks coming in. So I think for tonight, I would like to just focus on the map. But your point is well-taken, that I think we should self-tickle our calendars to make sure that we're reviewing what's being built, incentivizing what we want to be built, and as Todd said, maybe we're going to have to work with somebody on a project to show developers, hey, the cluster concept works. I think it's something for the future. I think for tonight, I think we, we really need to move this forward. We need to do this, we need to end the moratorium, frankly, and it's just time. And it's, I think we've been through a lot of hard work. We're not ending it. We're going to continue the work in the future, and I'm sure this council is committed to that.
Counselor Fisher?
I tend to agree we need to focus on the maps and not on introducing, like, probably a whole new concepts that are going to be difficult to match up with everything else we thought of tonight. Rick, can you clarify? So a compound and a cluster, like a three cottage, four cottage, those are available in core where a triplex or a row home is not. So potentially, part of this goes back to maybe that map question, which is, if you want to see other forms, don't design it so that they're automatically going to go to a, to a row house. Have these core areas where you think it would make sense, and you can still get some density in there that doesn't look like density. I mean, which I thought was kind of the object of the cottages and that sort of compound sort of look.
Right, that's correct. That is, that is the difference between transition and core. The transition is the first form zone that allows the triplex, row home type of development. So the core area, I mean, transition is a fairly small area in town, because there's much more core in the community, and those are in the, you know, the north neighborhoods, the areas around the Creek, Ethanite District, the 12th Street Historic District. Those are, those areas are heavily core areas, and they are the areas that do receive the most attention when it comes to fears of the bulk and scale and such. So, yeah, I think duplexes will still be allowed there. The biggest duplex is the Village duplex, but it's still smaller by far than any of the duplexes that are allowed today. But we do want to do our best to try to persuade people to use the compound and cluster form types, you know, instead of duplexes where we can.
Thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate all that, and I'm not going to die on this vine, but, or this hill, whatever. But I do want to suggest that last time we talked about this, Planning Commission had proposed that we extend the core on, I want to say 13th, for a half a block from Illinois to Arap Cheyenne, or something to that effect, and we did not agree with Planning Commission's recommendation. But now I just heard two people argue in favor of that, essentially saying bulk was the issue, let's make sure that we get the map right. Planning Commission specifically asked that we extend that core area, and I don't believe we did. But, Rick, can you correct me if I'm wrong on that?
No, you're correct. The area in question was the north side of 14th Street, just east of Cheyenne.
So it's on page 458 of your packet, if you haven't, I want to pull it up. So I would just say, you know, I honor their input on that, and I heard you, both these counselors, say, let's get the map right. So I kind of would be back to saying, you know, if nothing else on this issue, let's go with that core on that, that half block.
Counselor Brown, did you, you had the comments about that half block with the bigger homes last time. Did you want to raise that again?
That are all largely being used as multi-unit dwelling apartments right now, right?
Right.
Yeah. So what does that?
What does that get you?
What is moving it to core a good thing when the, what is it now? I'm sorry.
It's, well, it's R3 now.
But it's not core, Rick, it's?
It's, it's currently transition.
Transition. So transition kind of matches what's the current use of those large?
In a way, it matches the use, but not the form. They are big, multi-unit houses, though. I mean, they look like houses, and they appear on the street as houses. They just happen, their use happens to be apartments. But their use is not as dense as it could be if, for example, one of them were to burn down, you couldn't, a cluster would be ideal there, and it would be, it would fit in better. It's right in the 12th Street. I mean, it's essentially adjacent to the 12th Street Historic Neighborhood. I just think that in terms of bulk, granted, it's across the street, you know, there are big apartments across the street. It's just a little different. You know, it is what it is. I'm just saying that I just heard two arguments for getting the map right, and I think the Planning Commission had the map right.
Counselor Higginson?
A couple of things. I've discussed with Counselor, our city attorney, about the complication that this is. We're moving to a different type of zoning, form zoning. It is complicated, and understanding it is difficult, and I think we could probably use a two-page primer or something like that so that the average citizen could understand this in terms of how to use it. And so I'm just making a point to that effect. I'm not suggesting we vote on anything on that regard, but I just think it would be a good idea for the public to be able to better understand this with some ease, easy document. I don't know if it's going to be easy, but it would be less complicated if they could get a primer. And also, the definitions, we've, I've talked about that previously, that we need to have access to, to understand what the different terms mean. And also, I know for phase two, we're going to talk about commercial, but you understand that 75% of some of the commercial can be residential, and so we'll be looking at that. And the upper floors of commercial areas could be good housing for workforce housing. And right now, when we look forward to what that commercial can look like, they seem restrictive in terms of the number of stories and the setbacks that would reduce the potential workforce housing. But we'll save that for phase two. But I just want to remind us that this residential is not done tonight. It's going to be something that comes up again in phase two. So I agree with Counselor Reed that we move ahead and get rid of the moratorium and get this thing taken care of.
We can deliberate once we have a motion, so if there aren't any more general or question tape.
Do a public hearing?
We have to have a public hearing, so I'm not ready for a motion. I'm just saying, if we want to deliberate. I'm just saying, if we want to deliberate further, we can do that still. But I think we've gotten our general questions and comments out. So, I do want to open the public hearing on ordinance 2181. I don't believe we received any email comments specific to this public hearing item, but if you'd like to come and talk to us, you are welcome.
I agree with that, Council. But I'm just an observer, and I'm interested in hearing about the process.
Thanks for being here. So, since nobody wants to talk in the public hearing, I will close the public hearing on this item. I know we've had lots and lots of community input and comment previously. And, Council, is anyone ready to make a motion at this time?
Sure, I move to approve ordinance number 2181.
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion on the topic before we vote? Councilor Fisher.
Thanks. So, is this the part where we at least get to say, "I think there's been a tremendous amount of work done on this?" And we, and I'm actually excited that we're getting into some of these nitpicky things, because it says we're not talking about any sort of bigger failures in the process. So, thanks to everyone who's had a hand in this over multiple years, even prior to me getting back on council. So, thanks so much, and appreciate anybody who's been affected by the moratorium to wait for us to get this right. I really only have two things that I would like to, I guess, propose. One is, I'd like to propose that the Planning Commission go to three members to call it up. I think that is a reasonable amount. I don't think anybody's doing it willy-nilly. I actually have a lot of faith that our Planning Commission is thinking hard about this. And I like the fact that there's the second opportunity for them to talk policy. So, hopefully, that gives them an outlet for those general policy questions as well. So, I think that makes sense. And two is the map. So, I guess my, probably one big suggestion is, we've gone back and forth a little bit on the 10th Street corridor, and my suggestion is that we take Cheyenne to Washington along 10th and make that a core designation. I think it's a central part of trying to keep these sort of six to eight blocks together in this really core area. And I think what we've seen is where we've ended up with these row houses, like along 8th Street, I think it started to split what used to be a four or five-block depth, or I guess four-block-depth neighborhood up. And so, I think that, both based on the public input that we've gotten from the residents and the desire to try and keep this neighborhood as cohesive as we can without splitting it up block by block, I think that having Cheyenne to Washington between 9th and 10th, I'd like to see that as a core function as opposed to the transitional function. I'd probably go even to Illinois, of course, half of it's taken out by the City Annex Building already. So, those are probably the two, I don't want to say nitpicky things, but small but important items that I would like to raise, and sort of my thoughts on those.
Was there a motion in there someplace to amend?
Yeah, if we could take them one at a time to vote up or down, if you want to make the first as an amendment, and then?
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm happy to do so. I move to amend ordinance 2181 to change the Planning Commission from a majority to three people in order to call it up during the initial 180-day period.
Second.
And just to make sure I'm following along, would that amendment come, Kathy, in Section 9B?
Sure.
Okay.
Any further questions, comments? We've talked a fair bit about this piece already. All right. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the ordinance is amended to read three Planning Commissioners instead of a majority of Planning Commission. Councilor Fisher, you have another amendment for us?
Thank you. I would move to amend ordinance 2181 to have the blocks bordered by, between 9th and 10th Street and Washington and Cheyenne be moved into the core form zone as opposed to the transition zone.
So, this is an amendment to Exhibit D as referenced in Section 5.
Thank you for that. Well?
I'll second, and then I'll ask my clarifying question.
Well, please.
If you need a second.
Well, I don't know. If you want to second it, you don't have to.
Sure, I do. I want to second that, sure.
Okay. Go ahead with the questions.
Okay, now, so my question, though, is, so Bill, if I'm looking at that correctly, already 9th, like, the south side of 9th already is core, right? So, this would just take the north half of 10th and create a contiguous core along with those between, you're saying, well, Washington, but really the alley there. And then to Cheyenne, you're saying, or Illinois?
I'm saying Cheyenne.
Cheyenne, okay. Yeah, okay. I'm with you.
Yeah.
Okay.
And to clarify for those of us who don't have perfect memories, there's basically single-family homes there, and some, and that's about it, right?
Go ahead.
There's some commercial space there, right? There's the big building on the corner with yoga and other things, and then some, yes, some big single-family homes. And some of them have multiple units on those homes, on those lots.
Yeah, okay.
And, were you going to say, or did I get?
No, that's perfect. I was going to mention the commercial.
Yeah.
And I'll just mention, I'm not going to vote for the amendment, because the rest of 10th Street, so you have commercial, you also have transition from Cheyenne to Maple. So, this would carve out really just a single block of difference along 10th, and I'm not sure it needs to be significantly different for a single block or a block and a half. 10th Street is a major corridor. Certainly, 9th Street is already core, and that is what's proposed. 10th Street is a little bit different in that neighborhood in its uses and in what's currently there, and what's on the rest of the street. Any other comments on, any other discussion on the amendment before I call a vote? Nope. All right, all those in favor of the amendment to the Exhibit, what, Ms. Kockenberger clarified votes? Any, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
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 Want to do a roll call?
I think it was three and three, but do you want to do a roll call for the record?
Sure. Councilor Fisher?
Aye.
Councilor Cameron?
Nay.
Councilor Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Weinberg?
Nay.
Councilor Reed?
Aye.
Councilor Hazeman?
Nay.
The motion fails.
All right. Yes?
I'd like to man, let me ask, let me start with a question first with Kathy. So, can we go back and look at Section 9 of the ordinance? So, I thought I heard Mr. Murby, Mr. Messenger say that the interim procedure with the Planning Commission, they were anticipating that that was operating at the same time as the council call-up procedure during the 180 days. But if I, the way I read that, the last sentence in that first paragraph, "Prior to the effective date of review and call-up procedures, the following shall apply instead of the review," I was reading that as it was 180 days, the council call-up procedure doesn't apply. And I was, if that's the case, I was going to offer an amendment to change instead to in addition. But I would.
Can you please point us to where you're reading?
Yeah, so let's see. I am at page three of the memo. It's Section 9 of the ordinance. It's about that same area where I was talking about the interim procedural for the Planning Commission ratification process. The very first paragraph, right in Section 9, talks about interim procedures. The very last sentence of that paragraph says, "Prior to the effective date of review and call-up procedures, the following shall apply instead of the review and call-up procedures." And that's instead of the stuff back further in the code about the?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Councilmember Brown, I apologize for my earlier take on this. I think you're right. I think that's how that was, yeah, not having those two procedures collide, and I apologize that I missed that earlier. So, that's certainly a concern. How they fit together in the event of, you know, deleting that language would remain to be seen, but that's certainly a pact that the council could take.
So, would you like to offer an amendment, Councilman?
If, I would move on for a moment if Mr. Messenger wanted three to five minutes to think that over and make sure there wasn't a problem with having them apply at the same time. I would be happy, I would, I don't want to leap into an amendment if that introduces a new problem. So, if a few minutes pause helps attorneys make sure there's not a problem, then that's cool. We can move on to another topic for a bit.
All right.
How about that?
Pause that thought on concurrent interim and long-term, and we'll come back to that. Other council potential amendments or discussion points? Councilor Cameron, you look like you're ready to?
Well, I might as well propose the half-block of 13th to be, remain as core instead of transition from, what is it, Cheyenne to mid-block.
Yeah, and it's 14th.
It's 14th, the north side of 14th.
North side of 14th, yeah. To be changed from transition back to core per the recommendation of Planning Commission.
I'll second for?
So, that was a motion to amend Exhibit D of the ordinance?
Yep.
As noted, okay.
I'll second, so we can discuss.
Well, we could just go to vote, because, I mean, we've discussed it.
But no, but no, but I don't understand why you, so, but if it's transitioned, you can still do clusters. You can still do all the same stuff you're saying you want there, but you also do a triplex.
Right. And I think the triplex is bulkier than existing. I think that the, the way I see townhomes is also bulkier than a cluster, and what's there is not bulky.
Okay.
I think it fits in. So, it's just a way to, you know, kind of stay with what people have asked for in that area. That's my argument. It may not be compelling, but that's my argument.
I just wanted to make sure I understood.
I, go ahead, Councilor Fisher, I have a comment as well.
I find the reasoning incredibly inconsistent, but I will be consistent.
With what? I just voted against the other one.
Correct, absolutely. I think that's sort of stunning. But I actually am going to be consistent and agree with you on that one.
I would like to point out that the mayor's argument of the sort of commercial corridor municipal uses was compelling to me on 10th.
My comment on this block, not that it is a major corridor, in fact, there's not a lot of people who are on there other than going to School of Mines, and that is because on two sides, it is bordered by School of Mines, and on a third side, it is commercial. So, and School of Mines on those two sides is peripheral, which is an extremely intense use allowed on those two sides. So, to allow for some triplexes, the difference between core and transition, allow for some flexibility on a half a block that's bound by commercial and School of Mines property, I am comfortable allowing for that additional triplex, which is the difference between the core and transition. It is an unusual part of the map in that it is right adjacent to School of Mines on the two sides, and that is unusual, an unusual street, for sure. Yes?
I'll just weigh in briefly to say I agree with that. I also think that some of the historic preservation measures would come into play here, so I think the potential for change of use might be somewhat limited, so I don't see the same degree of likelihood of redevelopment of these. So, I think that the fact that it's bounded by commercial or large institutional buildings, I think really carries the day for me.
Any other comments before we vote on the amendment? Seeing no hands, all those in favor of the amendment to Exhibit D, please say aye.
Aye.
We might need a roll call vote. Ms. Mendoza, would you like to make a roll call vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Brown?
Aye.
Councilor Fisher?
Aye.
Councilor Cameron?
Aye.
Mayor Weinberg?
Nay.
Councilor Hazeman?
Nay.
Councilor Reed?
Nay.
Amendment fails.
The amendment fails. Do we want to go back to, are we ready to go back to the concurrent instead, or, whoop?
In addition to.
In addition to, to that piece. Mr. Messenger, do you have any further thoughts for us?
I do, Madam Mayor. I think that the issue is that under the interim procedure, the director approves or denies the site development plan within 30 days after receipt of the complete application, and then forwards it to the Planning Commission for its next available consent agenda. The timing of that is somewhat flexible, whereas the timing of the call-up procedure is not. So, the trick is to only have one shot in the Planning Commission. One way to accomplish the goal of ensuring that a project that a council member wants to see the Planning Commission look at would be to take the, in subsection 9B, to have the reduction of the approval to writing with a copy to the Planning Commission and to the council, and then have the council be able to essentially direct the Planning Commission to hear it on their next available agenda. So, instead, or pull it from consent, or however that would go. So, the way that would work is, Mr. Murby would put it on the agenda, they would get their packet, council would get that information as well. If council members decide that it should be pulled from the agenda, I don't know whether you'd want one or two or whatever, they would send an email to Mr. Murby saying so, and then when it came up to the Planning Commission, you know, the agenda would be corrected and the item would be pulled based on the request of two council members. That would be one way to accommodate the desire for a potential council interference with that process, or intervention, I guess, not interference, but intervention in that process, while still preserving its timeliness aspect. There's a lot of ways to do it, but that's certainly one way to do it.
What about Casey's way to do it?
Well, I think that's what would have to happen, is?
So, Mr. Messenger, could you tell me what would that change look like again in Section 9? I just want to make sure I'm following it. It's the?
So, yeah, I'll try to do this sort of on the fly as spoken red-line text. Subsection 9B, administrative approval shall be reduced to writing and promptly provided to the applicant, and along with copies of the application and supporting materials forward to the Planning Commission for placement on the Planning Commission's next available consent agenda for ratification, comma, with copy to the members of the city council. So, that comma with copies to the members of the city council would be the inserted text. This is being recorded, right, so we can pull this down later?
I'm writing it, too.
What's that?
I'm writing it as well.
Okay, because I'm not while I speak it. The Planning Commission may remove an administrative approval from the consent agenda for further discussion and deliberation by a vote of three members, or upon the written, or, and must remove the item from the consent agenda upon the written request of, insert number here, city council members received before the commencement of the meeting.
So, question on that, Mr. Messenger. Would that require a meeting from city council to have that? Or are you, what are you contemplating in terms of, would that go on council's agenda? And how does the timing work? Or would it just be three individual council members, or insert number here?
I think because of the timing, it's better for that number to be even just one.
Yeah.
But if, because that way, you wouldn't have to have any discussions. Certainly, the sunshine law applies, and you wouldn't have a, you know, a meeting of council members occurring at a local coffee shop, and then, you know, having a request of more than one come out of that meeting. That would be, I think, a violation of That would be, I think, a violation of state law in certain circumstances if there were too many council members present. So probably the safest bet here is, you know, a call from one that says, hey, pull this down. Since we're reducing the number of planning commissioners that can pull it anyway, my guess is if a, if a council member talked to a planning commissioner, you would end up pulling it from the agenda. It's probably better for the council member to formally ask for it and just have it automatically happen than to have that back-channel communication. You just put it all on the record. This is coming down because a council member wanted to be examined.
I agree with you. I just wanted to vet those logistics out loud for everybody.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the sunshine law is really important. We don't want to create incentives to violate that.
And then, just to clarify, we'd also have to change my "instead" to "in addition" up top, right, in section nine.
I know. I think it's...
Well, one clearly says, here's a, here's a provision for a council call-up later. Oh, I guess this would just add it in to the interim. I see what you're saying. Yeah, this would just, this would create a third, okay, yeah, so that would stay instead. I see what's happening. Okay.
And then it would go away.
Yeah.
At the end of 80 days. Or, you know, should council choose to extend that period? You know, there's some value in having that continue during the period where certain things are being worked on that have, that are knock-on effects from, from this part of the project. So I think council should watch this process carefully and be prepared to address amendments as they come up in terms of interim strategies and in terms of long-term strategies. You know, this is new territory, and I think, you know, it's appropriate to both tread carefully, but also, you know, with maximum levels of awareness as to how this is impacting, you know, both the proposed development that happens in Golden, but also the applicants themselves.
So, can I just, so, speaking of the rest of the council, it seems like you could just leave it as is. We don't have a call-up procedure in the first 180 days. It's just all Planning Commission. Or if we really did want to be able to direct Planning Commission to take a review, Mr. Messenger's suggestions there would let any one of us get it pulled from the consent agenda. Those seem to be the two options.
Those are the two best options.
Yeah, the two best options. I like that. Thanks for giving us your best, Mr. Messenger. I appreciate that.
Well, I...
The legislative discretion is very, very broad.
No, I appreciate that clarification, Council Brown, because, you know, didn't want to leave the impression that both were happening at the same time. So this is very good conversation. Personally, I'm very comfortable with, with letting Planning Commission take this for the first 180 days, you know, and coming to us if they need legislative change to make the process work better. But I, you know, I don't feel the need to have a oversight or an other channel or something else on my end, but...
I'd be interested in that.
I, I think I agree mostly. I think it'd be better if Planning Commission was in control of the situation. They could always reach out to us and say, we don't seem to have the authority we thought we needed, and, and ask for our assistance. But, you know, I'm trying to balance the fact that much of the public input we get is, the city of Golden is not looking out for the future of Golden, and you need to dig into the, you know, the details. And then you get another email that says, city council's down in the weeds, and get away. So, yeah, so letting Planning Commission do it, I think, is fine. So there is no motion, right?
There is no motion. So nobody's made a motion.
But he's asking for it, because he's considering a motion.
Does anyone else have anything?
So there needs to be a motion to amend per this discussion, or no?
Yeah, there's no, there's no motion right now, so it stands as is in the ordinance, unless...
They don't overlap, yeah.
They don't overlap. Fine.
So I guess, I guess I'm okay with that, but I guess without amending the ordinance, if we could get courtesy copied on what you're sending to Planning Commission, so that we can then have a discussion about maybe we do need to pull it up. You know, just, just a way to help us monitor what's going on without having to read Planning Commission packets every two weeks. That would help.
Yeah, that is always the point.
So I disagree with that, Council Reed. I've got enough documents coming from the residents. So what I'd like to do...
Do you want to know where the delete key is? I can...
But one of the things we could do is to go forward the way we, it is now, and if we detect a problem at all, we can revise it. But to say we're going to get additional documentation, I don't think that's necessary at this point.
My understanding is, you know, the, the applications will be on Guiding Golden for the 30 days for everyone, including us.
Right.
We have access to all the Planning Commission agendas, which will list which projects are up for discussion that next week. That's all public, nothing special for council procedurally. Mr. Merby, do you have a thought?
Yeah, just, just to clarify, we, you know, staff is not going to inundate you with these site plan packets. We were just going to put to the guiding open page where you can find them as, as you wish to review or not.
Sounds good. We don't need, like, the packets in our email.
Could be in the weekly update.
Yep, that's a good, that's a good suggestion. Now we're getting into, like, total other process, but, but Ms. Lorenz has that thought that next week these things are going to be on Planning Commission agenda. That sounds great. Other, anything else on the, the ordinance? Council Cameron?
Dare I bring this up? There's in the landscaping guidelines, 1829, 582, screening of trash and recycling containers and enclosures. And Council Reed brought up enforcement previously. We have moved the, we've moved the goalposts for our residents around bins. We've added compost, we've added, you know, we have larger bins, we have smaller bins. And I think that's an ongoing process. And frankly, I don't find trash cans particularly unsightly. I mean, I get, I get the idea of keeping them out of the right-of-way, which is item one, but I am not in favor of enclosures for all these bins, and I'm wondering why we want to add that expense. I know it's trivial, hundreds of dollars, but it all adds up. And I was just thinking, why require it? Especially since we probably don't enforce it.
So are you proposing a change here?
Yeah, I'm proposing that we eliminate 180, I mean, 1829, 580, 2C2. And, yeah, maybe, yeah, that's it, 2C2.
Mr. Merby?
Well, I think this is meant to, to be applied fairly broadly. This is, this is taking from chapter 1840 and pulling this into this, this section of 1829 as an interim measure. But this will, this will come back out again in phase two as the new chapter 1840. But I, so to that end, if council does want to consider this, I think we might want to specify when we are okay with there not being enclosures and when we are. So I, I think, I think Council Cameron is probably referring to, you know, residential uses along alleys, for example, and I don't, and that's not really what, I, I agree. I don't know that that needs to have enclosures, and we don't really enforce that either. I think this is meant for commercial and for multifamily, where you, where you do have these trash, these, these trash containers in parking lots or in visible view of, of the, of the right-of-way, where you wouldn't want to have them, you would want to have them screened in a, in a trash enclosure. So I think if you're, if you're wanting to, to have that distinction, I would propose we bring that back in phase two and have a more nuanced kind of definition of where we want it to apply and where we don't.
So it sounds like if we took out C, it would be inconsequential for residential because we don't enforce it anyway.
You do for multifamily.
Unless it's multifamily.
Multifamily, yeah.
Yeah, I think multifamily, if you have an apartment building, you know, they typically have large trash containers, and you don't want to have to look at them.
Well, since enforceability is something that we also were trying to build into the code, I, you know, I bring it up. Again, it's probably not a hill I'm going to die on, but just thought I'd mention it.
Did you actually make a motion?
Yeah, I'd move, I'd move that, where you move the item.
Okay, so there's a motion. I haven't heard a second. We've had some back and forths at this point.
You should restate the motion, state the motion.
Yes, thank you.
I'll restate that in section 1829, 580, number two, screening, subsection C, number two, we remove it from this version of the code.
Is anyone inclined to second? All right, there's no second, but it sounds like for Mr. Merby that this may be part of the phase two discussions. Anything else, council, on the ordinance?
Was it, did Councilor Reed, was there something in particular you wanted to be frame or...
I think based upon the points raised by Todd, I'm comfortable leaving it as yet for now, and just sort of monitoring future enforcement and looking at that as we progress.
Okay.
I'm seeing no hands. Hopefully, everyone has had ample time to ponder. And are we ready for a vote? All right, so we have a vote on the amended ordinance, number 2181. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. The ordinance...
Aye, I'm opposed.
I, unopposed, yes, I got that. The ordinance carries. Thank you all. Thank staff, thank you, council, thank Planning Commission, the consultants. I know this is just the first approval of many more steps that we still have, but this is a, a big, a big day that we actually have a final vote for our zoning code audit and rewrite project that we've been talking about for quite some time. So we should all be very, very thankful that we've gotten to this point. So thank you all for your work.
Can we take a short break?
Are we done?
We've got new business.
Okay, just new business. Do you need five minutes, or do we have? I'm okay.
Well, I was just wondering about a five-minute break or not.
Yeah, I mean, if you need a five-minute break, we can take a five-minute break.
Okay.
We've just got new business coming up, and then we'll be done, so keep it five minutes.
Yes.
Phase two. No psychists.
He will be.
Okay, I think we're all back. Let's, let's finish up, finish up tonight. Oh, should I use my gavel? I never use this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't use the gavel, but let's finish this up. And we have plenty of long meetings ahead of us. We're down to council staff comments and new business. As we've been doing, when we have a policy proposal, let's take that first for our new business, and then we can go around. So we have the 20 is plenty proposal from Council Cameron and Council Brown.
Do you want to say something first?
I can add on if you want to start it. Do you want to make a talk first?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for developing this process, because one of the ways the process was supposed to work was, let's check in with staff to see, you know, how big a burden it is, so when we bring it to you, you guys can be on board. So we did meet with staff, and they were super on board. We talked to Public Works, we talked to the police chief, we talked to Carly, and we had other Public Works staff in the meeting. And basically, they all said, not that heavy a lift, makes sense, it supports our photo radar, as I mentioned last week, because 10 miles an hour is 30, and you could actually enforce that, whereas if it was, stays at 25, then you can't enforce till 35, and that's kind of fast. I also looked up some information that the chief sent me this morning, how other communities roll it out to their communities, and, you know, some of the positive points. And, you know, I don't know whether this would match in Golden, but basically, 70% of residents typically supported this, and 10% might say, oh, no, I want to keep going at 30, and then 20 were undecided. So if we have similar numbers, you know, there, there should be pretty good buy-in. And then finally, the other number that jumped out at me today is that if you were to hit something at 30 miles an hour, it's like falling from a three-story building about 30 feet, whereas at 20, it's more like 12 feet. So you'd probably survive 12 feet, but 30 is really different, just because of the energies. So I would say there's good staff support, and I would encourage us to move it forward.
I'm going to ask a question, because I don't see a hand yet. So the first bullet is to recommend MTAB review and research. Are you still recommending it go to MTAB first, or are we recommending that council take it up? I guess, yeah, but just some clarification on what you're asking council to...
I'm not looking at the memo so far. Sure, take it to MTAB. And I think Joe has already got it on the agenda for June.
I don't know if he has it on the agenda. But yes, it definitely was in conversation. I think we saw this as first council kind of indicating if they want to keep going down this path, and then the next step on the path would be for MTAB to take it up, talk about it at their level. And timeline-wise, staff is talking about kind of education and feedback through the year, and kind of towards fall, winter would be when it possibly could be put into place. So I think that that was the timeline we were thinking of. And yes, MTAB can talk about this in June, is what Joe indicated, so.
And just what I heard from that discussion too, staff saying is they were already having, planning to bring model traffic code with us. So there's some kind of fortuitous timing, actually, in that it dovetails well with some of the other... of the other things they were already thinking about and already planning to bring forward. I heard from Joe talking about how by doing it in the fall, they can time a lot of the work from their staff to be making the new signs in the fall, in the quiet season, when they've got some more downtime. So, I, I was hearing and seeing a lot of, a lot of thinking that, you know, the, the timing works pretty well to plot a course out into the months in the future.
One just small correction is that the model traffic code, we're still recommending to go forward in the same timeline that we have outlined in our calendar, and then just amending it with this as it's enacted later in the year. But the, I'm sorry, I'm turning, traffic calming handbook was one of the processes that this would be helpful to understand if this was going to move forward or not before the MTAB moves forward with the traffic calming handbook and the way that they're designing that, because this would play into that. So, that was one of the other timing pieces that would be helpful.
Counselor Hayes?
I think this is a good idea. You know, I don't have my facts entirely straight, but I think I'm close that 75% of accidents occur within five miles of home. It's not on some super highway 90 miles away. So, it is important that we understand that this is local, and that this safety issue is something for Council to think of on the betterment for the city of Golden. Also, the majority of injuries are within five miles over the speed limit. So, you know, I'm sure MTAB will hear that, or correct me if I'm wrong, but the idea of trying to reduce this thing to 20 is, is a real benefit to the safety of the public. So, I just want to add those as a couple of comments in support of it.
Yeah.
I just want to make Council aware that, and Chief Harvey, feel free to step in if you have thoughts on this, but under state law, there are what they call prima facie speed limits based on the nature of the street, residential street, arterial street, et cetera. And state law provides that municipal authorities can change those speed limits, but it must, that determination must be on the basis of a traffic investigation or survey with additional factors for residential neighborhoods. So, in order to determine that a speed limit is, to adjust it either way, up or down, needs to be supported by a traffic study, so that will also play into timing. There's some potential expense if the in-house city engineer doesn't, or traffic engineer doesn't prepare that study. So, just wanted to make you aware of that, and that will go into the analysis and support of staff pursuing it if Council decides to proceed.
Do you know how close that nexus needs to be? Because we've certainly done traffic studies that say, you know, average speed on Eighth Street is, you know, 35 or whatever.
Well, it needs to comply with the model uniform traffic, traffic control devices and traffic engineering standards. That's what state law says.
We'll figure it out.
Yes.
So, we need to do thumbs?
We need three, Council. I, whatever, the packet that I look at, I legislate, never has the actual policy-
No.
So, I had to go online to look at the agenda. I appreciate the "as time allows." I know we approved MTAB's work plan for the year. I know they had a lot of things on there. You know, they may decide to move this forward in their work, if it helps with their traffic calming and other things they're doing. I don't, I like the "as time allows" so that we're not jumping ahead of something that they, or the city has already said we want to get done this year by pushing this in front. But I think to add this in and say we should look at it and see the benefit to Golden and the impact and what it would take to do, I am supportive of MTAB, you know, taking a look at that and coming back with that recommendation with staff. But again, really with the "as time allows," I, I, you know, maybe it works with the timing you've laid out, but I wouldn't want to bump other things if it's all of a sudden, now we need a study, and now we need to expend some money and take some more time, because they had a lot of great work that they were going to do this year.
So, do you want to officially ask for thumbs, or have you heard enough affirmation? How's that work?
Yeah, we have some thumbs, all the thumbs. Excellent. Great. Now that I'm off of the website. Yeah, mine's always blank. I don't know why.
Sorry.
I don't know why that works. Before I go around, I did want to talk about the city manager recruitment process with Council tonight. We have received a semifinal report. The executive recruiter is managing that process. Individual council members need to review and provide that input. It's a lot. It certainly is a lot. On our timeframe from the recruiter, it has, it originally said that we would have input back by this Thursday. I think it also says that they will need 10 to 15 days to provide a finalist report. So, after Council has provided, individual councilors have provided the input, they will collect it and then do all the due diligence to produce a finalist report, and need 10 to 15 days. And then finalists will need to be scheduled to come in. So, we are working with tight timeframes. I know it's the holiday weekend, so I'm just going to say, get it done as soon as you can. Everybody, you know, whatever your time commitment allows, I will check in with, with our recruiter on Tuesday morning after the holiday and see where we are, and assess with him, and have a conversation. If that sounds good. If you have any questions about the process at this point or going forward, you can ask me, you can ask Kristen, and we can get those questions to Edward about these next steps. Any- Yes.
If you find out that Edward is planning on working through the holiday weekend, let me know, but other than that, I, I'm just thinking that's when I, I can foresee some available time for me to, to catch up, so.
And that's, and I will definitely check in with him on the, the timing, but that's where I'm saying, as soon as we can, but certainly I will touch base and make sure on Tuesday morning that he has everything he needs to, to move forward in that process in a timely way, because it does start getting up on crunch time with dates, for sure. Anything else?
Did you want to provide an update on the number of applications, just for the few people that might be watching on TV?
Sure. So, the application process closed earlier in May, I can't remember the exact date, 6, maybe, and received 85 applications. The semifinal report that came out the end of last week has 20 semifinalists. Councilors have received those applications with the supplemental questions, as well as video interview questions. So, that, for 20 semifinalists. The process from here is each counselor reviews them independently and fills out a survey for the recruiter for top four, or five, I think it's four with an alternate five.
Actually, it says six on the online survey thing, but okay.
Does it say six?
Yeah, because I'm like, it was four, it's five, and six. I'm like, oh, I don't know.
It's some number. I will clarify, I haven't actually looked at the online survey. I will clarify that piece, that my understanding was, we were, we, we wanted four, we're planning on bringing in four finalists, so the fifth alternate, so that of the sorting of seven inputs, we would get to that number. But if that is different than what Edward is expecting, then I will touch base with him, and we'll, we'll let you all know. But that is, that is where we are. And we got great applicants, really great turnout numbers, and so far, I think the process is working well. All right. Let's go around. Counselor Hayes?
Well, just a reminder that the semifinals is confidential.
Yes.
And it, just reminding myself and others that if anybody's listening at home, don't call me. That's it, I don't have anything else.
Good reminder.
But to supplement Ken, or Hayes' comment, there will be an opportunity to meet the finalists the, what is that, July 20?
June.
June 27th, is it something like that? So, there, yes, the public is not going to be excluded from the process. You'll have your chance.
The only other thing I had is the fencing is down at DeLong Park. You can go walk through the park, although we haven't had a ribbon cutting. So, and speaking of ribbon cuttings, Astor House groundbreaking is Friday, so a lot happening. We expect good comments from the mayor.
Yeah. Counselor Brown?
Since we're not meeting next week, I thought I'd just mention that coffee with councilors is happening at DeLong Park in June, Saturday, June 4th. So, please come, join us at 10:00 AM. We'll still have coffee, and we'll still try to make it a hybrid meeting, depending on my technical capabilities.
At the park.
At the park. We're going to try it, because some people really like that, so we're going to give it a shot, but, so hope, hope folks can join.
Yeah.
Nothing.
Nothing. We do have a ribbon cutting at some point in June for DeLong Park, June 7th. Excellent. So, hopefully, we'll see everyone there on June 7th. I'm like, I know I had that conversation, Mr. Turillo, but I will not remember the date.
It'll just be at 5:30 before the council meeting.
The, the only thing I forgot to mention on the recruitment process, if you have feedback on that schedule, I'll check in with Counselor Trout, because it was that Monday, Tuesday, and there were some logistics. If you have any feedback on that final schedule that we've put together for that Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, please send it back to her, and then once we've got that finalized, we'll put it up on Guiding Golden, and everyone can plan for those dates and times for the community meet and greet, the business meet and greet, employee meet and greet, all, all of the different groups who will have an opportunity to meet with the finalists. And, yeah, there's a lot going on, but I'm not going to talk about it. So, Ms. Mendoza, do you have anything?
Nothing for me, thanks.
You have to have something for us.
So, one of the things I wanted to mention was, I, you've probably heard that a lot of cities around us have had, just like us, have had shortages of lifeguards and some real challenges with manning pool hours. So, this isn't to announce any official hours, but just that it's a delicate balance with the amount of staffing we have for lifeguards. And we're really trying to make sure that splash is open as much as possible, and then possibly changing the hours of the indoor pool accordingly for lifeguard availability. We're hiring just as fast as we can and training just as fast as we can, but we just want to make sure that it's safe for when people are there to use the pool. So, really what we're advising people is to check the website pretty much as much as possible to see what the hours might be or what the dates might be availability-wise. So, just want to put that out there. We'll have more information in the weeklies that comes out to the community tomorrow and on Facebook and those kinds of things, but checking the website is probably the best bet at this point.
Can we put something in the Golden Digest that says, hey, lifeguards?
Check it. Oh, yeah, yeah. Come on down if you want to.
Well, I'm just saying that that goes out.
Yeah, that's a good, good point. The other thing was just talking about the storm and tree branches. I know that's been a big thing that's on everyone's minds right now. Our site that we have open for drop-off, basically what's happening is it looks really full as everyone drops the tree branches, and then Public Works comes and kind of pushes it in, and then there's a little bit more room, and then it looks really full, and then they push it in again. So, we're kind of in that cycle right now. If it looks full, come back and we'll have consolidated it a bit. If we need to add a second location as it fills up, we will, but that's sort of the status right now. I know people are worried when they see it looking full, but we've been able to consolidate it quite a bit. So, just wanted to put that out there. And I think that's the main things I wanted to say.
Rod Turillo looked really good on Channel 9.
Yeah, he was real excited about that.
Excellent, excellent. I missed that. Chief, anything for us? No? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm going to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We stand adjourned. Thank you all.